This is the City Council Joint Study Session with the Parks and Recreation Commission, and followed by a special meeting. Madam City Clerk, would you call the roll, please?
Mayor Kristi Mauchow.
Present.
Deputy Mayor Karen Moran.
Here.
Councilmember Tom Hornish. Councilmember Jason Ritchie.
Here.
Councilmember Chris Ross.
Here.
Councilmember Pamela Stewart.
Here.
Councilmember Ramiro Valderrama.
Present.
And Tom Hornish just joined.
Okay, perfect.
Too late.
Commissioner Klein, would you lead us in the pledge, please?
Please rise.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Can I get a motion to approve the agenda, please?
It's been moved and seconded.
Any discussion? Okay, hearing none. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, by 7-0, the agenda is approved. Next, we'll have public comment. This is an opportunity for the public to address the council. Three-minute limit per person, or five minutes if representing the official position of a recognized community organization. If you would like to show a video or PowerPoint, it must be submitted or emailed by 5:00 p.m. end-of-business date to the city clerk, melanieanderson@smamish.us. Please be aware, council meetings are videotaped and available to the public. Okay, first, we have Jan Byrd.
Is this on? Okay. Good evening, Council and Parks Commission. I'm Jan Byrd. I live at 3310 221st Avenue Southeast here in Smamish. And I first want to talk about the stormwater management and the lower commons based on what I read in the packet. And I've supported the idea of stormwater ponds from the standpoint that it's more natural-looking than our traditional stormwater prisons. Also, the idea of regional stormwater management is good because you don't need a large number of individual ponds. However, that's my thoughts about new development on the developments' land. This almost, to me, is almost like taking part of a public park and giving access to a private developer to take care of the stormwater. So my understanding is from state law, kind of prohibits the gift of public funds or property for private use. And it appears to me that providing public land for a private detention service almost would be a gift. So I'm wondering, could the city sell the notch to the developer, and maybe they could build a bigger detention pond at that location? Now, the question I have, as we're looking at all this, with all the changes to the lower commons related to the town center, how much parking will be left? Because if you're a gardener, you can't carry plants and tools a long distance. My understanding is some of the parking will be, you know, won't be there anymore. So, and also, I'm wondering, if you put in an open stormwater pond, will there be adequate room for the Fourth of July event and other events the city will be having? But I was happy to see that native plant garden was recognized on the PowerPoint. And I wonder if it's possible that we could have a sign, even a small sign? Because Linda Hines kind of started the work back in, I think, 2008, and it was followed up with the first native plant steward group in 2009. And most people don't even know it's there because there's not any kind of sign that I can see. And I'm gonna kind of switch gears here. I also talk about the East Lake Smamish Trail. I found out recently that at the State Shorelines Hearing Board issued their decision on November 7th, and remanded the application for the shoreline substantial development permit back to the city to approve and issue. And the board also noted the project involved the removal, avoided the removal of significant trees whenever possible, and noted that the project area will be revegetated. They also said the county's choice of the trail width is justified and reasonable in this case. The county already has avoided or minimized impacts to critical areas, and has proposed compensatory mitigation for unavoidable impacts. And also, the transportation setback requirement is expressly excludes trails, so that really isn't needed. So my hope is the city will issue the permit shortly, so we can work on getting the project completed. Also, a quick thank you for council, and also the Parks Commission and Parks Department for giving us the plant salvage area at Beaver Lake Park. We hope to open, get in there on the 16th. So, thank you very much.
Thank you. Sharon Steinbiss.
Good evening, Sharon Steinbiss, 24933 Southeast 14th Street, Smamish. I'm basically gonna reiterate everything Jan said. Thank you very much for the native plant storage facility. It's looking great. Jan and I got a tour of the UW's native plant facility over the weekend, and we're gonna try and model some of what we saw there at the Beaver Lake Park maintenance sheds. Also, want to encourage a full and timely opening of Big Rock Park Site B. It's gonna be a fabulous park. We're really excited, and we want to support the Pine Lake Garden Club, now the Botanical Society, who want to basically take on creating and maintaining the heritage garden at Big Rock Park Site B. I'm also concerned about the impact of stormwater on the lower commons. My main concern, besides the vaults, is the maintenance of the vaults. I understand vaults are difficult to maintain. The size of the vault that's going to be needed, or multiple vaults. I'm concerned also about putting water from the town center onto what is a public park, a public site. I'm also concerned about the impact downstream of all this stormwater, if it goes into either a pond or a vault on Ebright Creek, Ebright Creek being one of our cokony-bearing streams. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone else that would like to address the council? Mary, please.
Hello, my name's Mary Victor. I live at 408 208th Avenue Northeast in Smamish. I did email in a list, but I'm gonna try to cover it here in three minutes. My comments are related to the public work standards, which it looks like you're gonna do biannual updates, which is great, because the prior public work standards were from 2001, and they didn't get updated till 2016. And stormwater code, that was from 1998 and 2009, didn't get updated to 2016. So my comments are related to maybe making those 2016 updates work a little bit better between the public works documents and stormwater and other things I've read, and those thousands of pages that I read in 2016. The first one is, does public work standards, does changing it change the vesting for the projects? Like, if we keep the 2001 for the old ones, and the 2016, do we also have to have a 2018 version online? Also, you're changing to put the city engineer in for authority, and that's fine, as long as you always have a city engineer who's active. Otherwise, there's no designee in the code. There's a thing called city's trench restoration map. I haven't seen that, but it's mentioned several times. And I'm wondering if the city designates heavy truck or freight routes in the city to avoid impacts to roads, public or private, if that's been done or being communicated, since you guys are interested in transportation. So some of the changes I'm requesting I'd like to see is in the road sections. For all the roads, they say that you can eliminate or reduce things based on not having the right amount of rideaway or critical areas, subject to the city engineer's approval. But it does not allow that for non-articular roads or local roads, and I think those should be included as well. The city also does not seem to have a restoration time period after people finish building. Like Bellevue has something they called Surety Performance Bond. So when you build, you have a bond that lasts a year, so it gets through all the seasons, so you can see if there's problems with it. I don't believe that our city does that. I know they don't do it in private areas, at least. Also, if you're resurfacing a road, you shouldn't be allowed to change the grade, because that can change stormwater. And I'm not sure that our code or regulations covers that. Trenches can also end up being a route for stormwater if they're not compacted right or use the right type of fill. And I know that the new public work standards, which was adopted, that became effective in January of 2017, they do use WSDOT for backfilling compaction, but I'm wondering if that really works for our city and our codes? Because when stormwater goes through trenches, it makes the utilities not perform or break down earlier. I also, you can search for the word septic. The word septic does not occur in the document. People really need to record where those are, either in the geotechnical reports, the record drawings, or certainly in the survey requirements, because cutting slopes and being next to septics, you can ruin other people's properties or have problems with water quality. Parking on street might not be allowable for certain critical areas or certain homeowners' associations. It was mentioned in the LID stormwater stuff that Portland concrete is bad for spagnum bogs. I brought this up in 2016, but wasn't able to get it in. There should be alternatives in those areas, because they're 1,000 years old. Mulch needs to be approved, and metals can also leach. So anyway, I sent these in early. I know it's not a public hearing yet, but I figure the earlier, the better. Maybe something will get considered. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone else that would like to address council? Okay. Seeing none. Get back to my agenda here. Okay, our first topic is the King County Parks Levy Funding and Land Conservation Initiative update. Mr. City Manager.
Yes, Madam Mayor, councilors, and welcome Parks Board members. It's exciting to have everyone here, and it should be a very good topic this evening about a subject that I think all of our citizens can feel very proud of, and that's our park system. And with that, I'm gonna turn it over to Ms. Fesser to introduce your guests this evening.
Thank you, City Manager Patterson. Tonight, I am pleased to introduce two of our guests from King County. We have Katie Terry, who's the Acting Director of King County Parks and Recreation, as well as Bob Burns, the Deputy Director for Department of Natural Resources and Parks. Tonight, they're gonna be sharing with us a couple of programs. The Parks, the King County Parks Levy, which is up for renewal in 2020, as well as the Land Conservation Initiative that the county has been working on for quite some time. So a bit of update on both of those, how they tie together a little bit, and then there'll also be soliciting some feedback from the council members and park commissioners as well. So with that, I'll turn it over to Katie.
Thanks very much. So I'm Katie Terry from King County Parks. And tonight, what we have is on the Parks Levy. We have a six-year Parks Levy, and that provides over 80% of our funding. It expires in 2019, and so to have continued funding for parks, we have to have some kind of a measure on the ballot in 2019. And currently, we're in a process of gathering feedback on what that might look like for 2020 and beyond. What we have today is a video that talks about, it's a four-minute video, that talks about the current Parks Levy, both as context to understand what we do and what the Parks Levy is currently funding. And then that's also the foundation for what we would be doing going forward, to understand when we're getting feedback, we needed to have something that was a, not a straw proposal, but we needed something concrete for people to give us feedback on. And so after the video, we have a PowerPoint that talks about what it would look like if we did a similar Parks Levy going forward, what we would call a status quo levy, and then some funding enhancements that could potentially be part of the levy. And really, what we're getting feedback on is, what is feedback on all of those components? What is the feedback on, are we missing something, or kind of how, what that mix looks like? So we'll start off with a video. I'm hoping it's gonna work, because it seems to be thinking, but if we can try to cue this up. Okay.
So what does $56 get you these days? Maybe a cup of coffee for a month? Or maybe, an entire network of parks, trails, and natural areas throughout King County? In 2013, over 70% of King County voters approved a six-year, $418 million property tax levy to fund these amazing places. So what is a levy, anyway? A levy collects taxes based on the assessed value of someone's property. And this levy, the King County Parks Trails and Open Space Replacement Levy, for the average homeowner, was an estimated annual tax of just $56. In other words, just that one month of morning coffee. By the end of 2019, the $418 million levy will have gone to taking care of King County's 30,000 acres of open space, protecting more open space, repairing aging park infrastructure, and expanding regional trails, supporting cities to improve and maintain their parks, add to the Woodland Park Zoo for educational programs and operations. We'll also use all these funds to leverage more than $70 million in grants and business revenue. This levy is important. It accounts for about 80% of our operating funds. You know, the stuff that keeps the lights on, the park gates open, the trail safe, and the trees growing. At King County Parks, we're on track to achieve the four goals we promised voters with the levy. Levy Goal One, take care of King County's parks. In addition to maintaining 200 parks, 175 miles of regional trails, and 30,000 acres of open space, we'll rehabilitate 13 play areas, like Steve Cox Memorial Park, Five Mile Park, and Big Fin Hill Park. We've also repaired or replaced infrastructure at five of five sites, including Dockton Park, Warehouse, and King County Aquatic Center, and Merrimore Park. Levy Goal Two, improve regional trails and non-motorized mobility. We'll have 14 regional trail projects in design or construction, including Green to Cedar Rivers Trail, Foothills Trail, and East Lake Smamish Trail, and a few that are brand-new, Lake to Sound Trail, and the Eastside Rail Corridor. Levy Goal Three, grow and connect regional open space. By 2019, we'll have acquired 2,700 acres of parkland, including adding 226 acres to Cooper Squawk Corridor to protect a forest that was threatened with a clear cut. Levy Goal Four, make parks and recreation more accessible. Well, for starters, we'll have added 11 new trailheads, like the Windsor Dooley Hill Mountain Bike Park, Taylor Mountain Forest, and Granite Creek. We're also investing in community groups to improve our rec facilities. We've distributed $5.4 million to projects like a bicycle playground at Dick Thurnell Memorial Park, a safe place for people to hone their bike skills. And on top of all that, we're supporting parks and open space everywhere by distributing some $58 million to King County cities for local park projects and the Woodland Park Zoo. You can see that King County has been a good steward of the 2014-19 King County Parks Trails and Open Space Replacement Levy. When the current levy expires in 2019, King County Parks will still need to keep the trails open, the lights on, and the parks safe, clean, and accessible. Securing future funding will mean we can respond to the changing needs of our rapidly growing region by building a more interconnected trail network in both urban and rural areas, repairing aging park facilities, and protecting the last best green spaces in King County. We'll also share the love by supporting parks in our cities, making sure everyone has a local park or trail to enjoy. And as always, we'll continue to put your levy dollars to good use, making sure that we're hard at work, so you can play.
That's another program we're doing, the Trailhead Direct. So that gives some context for what we're doing under our current levy. And basically, that sets the foundation for what we would be looking at going forward. So when we look at a levy, we typically look at a six-year period of time. So 2020 through 2025 is what we're looking at here. And just as some background, this is actually our third levy that we're currently on. In the early 2000s, the county and kind of the region looked at whether or not to continue a county park system. That basically, when there was a general fund crisis, there was a task force that was convened, and it was put to the voters of whether or not to fund a levy and fund a county park system. And that's what started our first levy in 2004. And we had a renewal in 2008 that added continuing operations and adding open space trails, and pass-through to the Woodland Park Zoo. And then, under our current levy, all of that was kind of combined into one levy, and that 2014 levy is the basis for what we're looking at going forward. During this period, we had an update to our vision and mission, and those tie very tightly into the goals of our current levy. And that's what we would continue to be doing going forward. So it's taking care of what we have, improving regional trails, growing and connecting regional open space, and making parks and recreation more accessible. We're also planning for population growth. The statistics from the PSRC is that the region will grow, that King County will grow by 180,000 residents over the next 10 years. And this is something that all of the cities are seeing as well. We're also looking at incredible growth of the use of our lands, again, just like the cities are. Article that came out in the Seattle Times earlier this year talked about hikers and hiking, how that has grown. The number of hikers has doubled over the last 10 years. Some of that reflects the growth of the number of people in the region, but it's a sevenfold growth over regional growth, population growth. And so it's not just that there are more people here. Those people are using, are on the land even more than they were before. And so when we look at what a renewal is, if we were to do a status quo levy, we'd be looking at the same kind of programs that we currently have. So that's going from the bottom to the top, continuing to fund basically our basic operations, and taking care of some specific infrastructure projects, just as we've done in the current levy, continuing to have funding for developing the regional trails and acquiring open space. The next, the next kind of category is CPG, which is our Community Partnership and Grant Program, which has been a very powerful grant program for us. There were some examples of this in the video. The Smamish Rowing Association, for instance, the new row house at Merrimore is an example of where we've been able to invest seed money and then bring in private funding to be able to create new recreational amenities. And so that would be continuing that level of funding, and then continuing a level of funding for pass-through to the cities for park purposes and the Woodland Park Zoo. Some additional kind of categories, what we're calling enhancement options that we're getting feedback on as well, is if there is kind of support and willingness to include other things in the levy. Again, going from the bottom to the top, the most significant one is funding for the Land Conservation Initiative. And this is a, this has been a very high priority for the executive in terms of preserving the last best spaces. And Bob is gonna be talking about this in more depth in a moment. One of the major issues for the Land Conservation Initiative is just having funding to be able to secure those lands, and that securing them earlier actually saves a fair amount of funding, just because land costs have gone up so much. So this is an attempt to further that, further that initiative and further that vision. Other categories that we're getting feedback on, infrastructure with the overall county park system, regional trails, if we had an additional penny, what we could accomplish with development of the trails. Equity grants, this is kind of a mirror to our CPG, that Community Partnership and Grant Program. And so is there a support or willingness to include grants that would be reaching areas that our current CPG program doesn't, as that program is focused on county parks and kind of groups that are already partnering with us for the most part? And then the last category is the Seattle Aquarium, that the aquarium has approached the executive and council about kind of the support and willingness to include a specific $8 million for the Ocean Pavilion that the aquarium is building. That's a big project that they have, and have a $115 million project. And they are requesting or asking if there is support for including that $8 million through the Parks Levy. So the next slides have kind of more, more detail about what each of those options or what those various categories would be able to do. So the first is taking care of what we have. And under that, status quo is continuing to run the park system as we currently have it. So the 200 parks, 175 miles of regional trails, over 200 miles of backcountry trails, which are the hiking, mountain biking, equestrian trails, like we have in Grand Ridge and Soaring Eagle, and then 30,000 acres of open space. And then, on the capital side, doing asset management and infrastructure. If we were to do status quo in the same programs that we did before, it would help us do more play area rehabilitation, taking care of bridges and trestles on old parts of the trail system, improving trailhead access, and recreational infrastructure repairs at five sites. With the enhancement, our estimation is that we'd be able to address some turf ball fields, kind of replacement on artificial turf ball fields, doing a lot of rehab on our backcountry trails, and then repair and rehabilitation at several parking lots and restrooms around, around the region. Again, something that's not terribly flashy unless you were the one using it, and then you really want it to work. So a map is a little more indicative of what, what this all would look like. And so we've, we've tried to map out where proposed projects would be, both with status quo funding, and so that's what those rust-colored icons are. And then the green is what we would be able to add on with enhanced funding for those The next category is improving regional trails and mobility. If we were to do status quo funding, our estimation is that we would be able to do design and construction of five segments on the regional trail system. Critical crossings are areas where it's not necessarily a long span, but a rather expensive, say, a bridge crossing a river at Enamclaw and the Foothills Trail. So some very small but specific projects. And then continuing to take care essentially of the regional trail system that's already in existence. The enhancement would be able to fund seven additional segments. And again, just looking at a map, the sort of rust color is the status quo projects, and the green are the additional projects with enhanced funding. The next category is growing and connecting regional open space. With status quo, we've been, over the last two levies, doing quite a bit of acquisition and preserving open space. And this would be continuing that level of funding. Our estimation is that we'd be able to acquire another 2,000 acres of high conservation priorities. And then the enhancement, this is the largest of the enhancement options that we're getting feedback on, would be accelerating conservation through that Land Conservation Initiative vision. And this is split up into two, over on the left-hand side. It's basically if you were to add up to two cents of a levy rate to be able to do acquisitions, and then it's close to a penny is our estimate for doing operations and maintenance associated with that. And the concept behind this is that this would be funding that would be available both to the cities and the county, much like the Conservation Futures Tax, which is an existing separate tax that is used for a lot of land conservation in the region, and that requires match. And so the idea is that this source of funding would be able to help with that match, much as our status quo funding has helped us do over the last 10 years or so with, through the Parks Levy, in having acquisition funding. And then the final category is making parks and recreation more accessible. On the status quo side, that's the Community Partnership and Grant Program that I had mentioned, continuing that level of funding. And then the enhancement option of doing an equity-focused grant, and that's, again, to increase access and use of recreation facilities. And then on the kind of pass-through from the Parks Levy side, status quo, if we were to do the status quo level of funding, having both funding pass-through with the cities and the Woodland Park Zoo, and then the enhancement option of the $8 million for the Ocean Pavilion to the Seattle Aquarium. So a summary of all of those enhancement options, we just thought it would be helpful to see a snapshot. Again, the Land Conservation Initiative is the largest of them, but infrastructure and regional trails are other kind of major buckets. And then equity grants in the Seattle Aquarium. And coming back to that original slide of kind of what that all looks like together. If we were to do everything that's on this slide, we'd be looking at over, just over an 18-cent rate, 13 cents of that being the status quo, and close to 5 cents for the enhancement options. What's a little tough is that when we started this, and what you hear in the video, is in 2014, or going into 2014, the assessed value of a home was, the median household was about $300,000 for the county, across the county, absolutely. And the estimate at that time was that it was $56, starting in 2014, to be able to do the levy. The median assessed value now, according to our Office of Economic Forecasting, is $500,000. So again, that's across the county. And for a number of communities, including this one, I think it's probably about double. But for a $500,000 home, just to have that, more of that apples-to-apples comparison, this levy status quo would start at $66. this levy status quo would start at $66. If you were to do everything on this slide, it would range up to $92. So that's just kind of a context of order of magnitude. And then we've been asked, and so we created a slide of what does that look like on a typical property tax bill? And so it depends on the jurisdiction that you're in, and that can vary. I swear every house has a number of different jurisdictions that they may fit into, depending on what kind of taxing districts they're in. But as a general rule, schools and school districts are about the mid-50s to the mid-60s of an overall percentage of a property tax bill. Cities, other special levies and other county property tax makes up the bulk of the remainder of that. And then the King County Parks Levy is roughly about 1% to 1.5% of that overall tax bill. And then our timeline, in terms of kind of doing this outreach, we're currently in that in the summer/fall, where we're seeking feedback from all of our stakeholders, or as many stakeholders as that we can reach, with the goal of having the executive transmit a recommendation, a legislative package, in February of 2019, that if we were to go on an August ballot in 2019, that our county council would need to adopt a ballot proposal. And that is still a political decision of whether or not we would be on an August or a November ballot, but those are kind of the two choices to be able to do a six-year levy, August or November. So to at least keep an August option open, we would need to be transmitting something, a recommendation, February of next year. And then the feedback that we're seeking is really asking for feedback on these components, both of if we were to do status quo, you know, any and all things that we're doing in the status quo levy, as well as these proposed enhancement options, but also asking, is there anything that we're missing, or other comments, questions, or concerns? And we have both this paper, we have a paper form, but we've also been doing this as an electronic version, to be able to get feedback from user groups and cities, other stakeholders, just to get that feedback, to be able to have the executive be able to make as informed of a decision and as, as much input as possible in that decision. So that's the end of my part. Bob has, we have some more slides about the Land Conservation Initiative, but also happy to answer questions whenever that makes sense.
So if you have a question, I'd just ask you to kind of tip your card up and know you have something. Commissioner Klein?
Hi. A question, I just wondered, how do you decide, well, the Land Conservation Initiative is a major portion of the enhancement process. And does it make sense, when does it make sense to tag it on along with the levy? When would it make sense to have it on its own? I mean, there's times when you put two measures together, it's possible that both will fail, possible that both will succeed. If they're dealt with individually, is there an advantage to that? So does it make sense to combine the two?
I think that's a great question, and that's a lot of the feedback that we've been receiving, especially in the last few weeks. That's typically a political decision. Our last task force made a recommendation, or the task force for our current levy, made a recommendation of what they thought the component parts of the levy should look like, but whether that should be combined into one or two levies, they left to the executive and council to decide. So it's often a political decision, but I think since we have been getting that feedback, that's feedback that we are sharing, that we will be sharing, both with the executive and with our council.
Councilmember Valdrama?
Piggybacking, I was going to ask the same question, but then the second part of it that I'm curious is, what happens if the levy fails, given especially what we're watching with the bonds that have been coming out lately for parks failing in Redmond, Issaquah, Kirkland had one previous. What happens, what's Plan B?
So that's a great question, because we do kind of live and breathe on the levy. And, you know, to be honest, if it didn't pass, we would have to be, you know, my guess is that we would be going back to the drawing board, that we would probably have a period of time where we would be mothballing or severely shutting down parks. It happened about 15 years ago, when we went on to the first levy. And then probably going out with a much smaller measure, but there would be a very painful year in all of that. The hope is that we would be going out for something that would not be jeopardizing the Parks Levy, and that's got to be part of the political calculus.
I have a follow-on question to that. So if you mothball projects, for example, here we have the East Lakes-Samamish Trails, and during its design, there was a lot of contention as to how it was designed, because it was going to be maintenance-intensive as far as how it was designed. And if you mothball, those maintenance continue. At that time, as Tom Wodel may recall, there was a question of, would cities be required to then maintain and assume those costs? And that was something we didn't want to get into that business. And so that's a fear of mine. If this doesn't fail, suddenly we get the design we didn't want.
Yeah, no, I think, again, that that's not the overall intention. One thing that is fortunate about the Parks Levy is that it's a simple majority. So rather than bonds that have to pass with over 60%, that it is a simple majority vote. The other thing is that the current Parks Levy passed with just over 70% support, that we've actually seen an increase over the last three levies in terms of support. But that's nothing to be counted, taken for granted.
Yeah, not as from McCleary and ST3.
Agreed, agreed.
If you could restate again what the levy amount is currently for an average home?
Yeah, so it's, it gets a little tricky, because it changes over time, because the levy's indexed to inflation. So in 2014, the levy started for that kind of median household, I'll say. It started at $56.
Okay.
It was a much higher rate, that's why. It was an 18.77 cent rate. That's been indexed to inflation, so it's probably right around kind of the low 60s at this point, kind of by the end of the levy. And then the estimate is that beginning in 2020, that it would begin at $66 if you did all of those status quo components.
Thank you. Deputy Mayor Moran?
Is there any reserves that is in the current levy or in the upcoming levy? Any reserves amount that is put aside for should the levy fail? So you have a reserves amount to carry forward, and so you have to put it back on the ballot and that sort of thing?
Yeah, so the county actually changed policies after this levy started. So we were on a bit of a tight-belt program at the beginning of this levy to make sure that we were saving up reserves. And to be honest, the levy business is, on a grander scheme of things, a relatively new thing for the county. And not just in case something didn't pass, but also because it's a property tax levy for cash flow, because you have a number of months before a new levy starts, that there is a rainy day reserve policy. It's actually called that. And so it's a minimum of three months, but I think that it's a recommended six-month reserve. So that's absolutely part of what's there, and that's much more robust than what used to be there.
Commissioner Klein?
Kind of a two-part question. So cities are beneficiaries of the levy. About 90% of the King County population is in incorporated areas, and yet the cities get less than 10% of the revenue from this. So to what extent do cities have input into the composition of the levy? And how does it decide what portion of the levy that cities get, are allocated?
So the current allocation was based on two levies ago. And to be honest, that's when math was a little simpler, because it was a five-cent levy, and that it was three cents for county parks, one cent for the cities, and one cent for the zoo. And again, that was a lot of political calculus behind it. A lot of, and that levy was also limited to the cities, as it was for the county for that portion of money, to be just spent on open space acquisition and regional trail development. The current levy continued that level of funding for the cities with inflation. So the overall amount has grown over time, and it opened up the purposes, so it is now generally for parks purposes for all of the cities. With this session or this round of outreach, we're hearing a lot from the cities saying, hey, there's a lot of interest in having more money from the levy for the cities. And so that's something that we're both hearing a fair amount. Our request has been knowing kind of what that means for the cities, as in what's meaningful. We would, you know, like to be able to share that, again, with the executive and council, but knowing, some cities have said, hey, if we just had X amount or X amount more, that would be very meaningful and helpful for us. Others have had just more of a kind of open-ended, and we want to make sure that we're being responsive and also really sharing kind of directly what the cities are thinking.
If I might add, in addition to the pass-through to the cities of the county funding, it's about 70% of that funding is spent in the urban areas. So a number of county facilities are inside urban areas. Now, it's not uniformly spread through every city, so it's a little uneven in terms of how much is in one jurisdiction versus another, but approximately 70% of the county Parks Levy spending occurs in urban areas, and that's trails and other park facilities. Think about like Marymore Park and the King County Regional Aquatic Center as examples.
Angie?
Right, so I do have some information here related directly to Samamish. The citizens of Samamish pay to the county about $2.3 million annually into the Parks Levy, and we receive about $160,000 a year earmarked just for Samamish projects. But another good example, Bob, is Soaring Eagle Park, right?
That's what I was going to bring up, yeah.
That is only accessible through our city, through two roads, and highly used by a lot of our residents. But that's a King County-maintained park, so that's another fine example of those resources.
And I would also add to that, that we've done acquisitions adding on to Soaring Eagle Park. So there's both the operating side of it, but there's also the capital side, where we've been continuing to focus on the Emerald Necklace as one of our major focuses, full eye for this levy.
I have a couple of questions, and just a little bit of feedback, since you're seeking it for us. I think it's been brought up before relative to the status quo versus the enhancement option. And I would, if there's a fear of putting them both on, whether you put them together or separate on a ballot, I think you run the risk, if you separate them, of people looking at the valuation or the impact to their property tax bill and picking the enhancement option and not the status quo. So I would not put them as separate ballot measures for that reason. And considering, you know, kind of what we've seen historically as far as property valuation rising, so property tax bills are rising, I think voters are extra sensitive to additional levy measures. And I think the status quo, if you will, probably would sit better with voters. And then I might suggest running the enhancement option the following year, so that they're not so tethered together. But I do have some specific questions relative to what the county's vision is for the funding attached specifically to cities, which in the status quo, you've got $36 million, and the land conservation under the enhancement option, you've got $124 million. Is there some vision for where they're spending that money specifically? And is there anything specifically earmarked for Samamish?
So for the cities' pass-through currently, and again, for the last two levies, there is, there's a formula for how that is spread, and it's based 50% on assessed value in the cities, and on each city, and then 50% on population. So that, when Angie had mentioned, how much is currently going to the city of Samamish, that's kind of, if we were to do status quo and do it the same way, that's how that formula would work. In terms of the Land Conservation Initiative, it would be dependent on cities applying. And our assumption is that this would go through the Conservation Futures, there's a citizen committee that determines or makes recommendations for CFT, for that Conservation Futures Tax, and that the cities and the county apply to the CFT committee for funding. Currently, that is about a 2/3, 1/3 split of it going to the cities versus the county. And that our assumption is that this, if that Land Conservation Initiative, if that additional funding were included, that it would fall along the same lines. It would likely be used as match for CFT. So it would depend on who was applying, but our assumption is that it would fall kind of in that general percentage.
Councilwoman Stewart?
Yeah, if you're looking for feedback, I'm very much in favor of the, in terms of the enhancements for the land conservation. I mean, we're hearing constantly from people that, you know, they want to see, you know, us protect the environment, they want to see us save the trees. I think it's a great way to, I think the last and best lands is a great way to describe that, that buying them now makes a lot more sense than waiting till later. So in terms of looking at a mix, you may do a status quo plus land acquisition, because waiting another year, most likely those land values are just going to get more and more expensive. So I'd be very much in favor of that. I think our community would be in favor of that, and especially if that money could be put to where we could get some matching funds to do that within our own city. I think explaining that further to people would certainly help, so that they know that that's not just conserving land somewhere out there, but that that money could be used to help us conserve parkland right here in our own city.
Thank you.
I don't see any more questions, so.
Can I ask a question?
Yes, absolutely. Councilmember Harnish?
I guess I'm still trying to figure out the math, and I'm sorry, maybe I just don't quite understand, but you talk about a levy, you know, pennies per thousand or half a million, so to speak. If the AV goes up and it's a, so many pennies per thousand, I would think that the revenue would go up too. And I'm trying to figure out, have there not been excess revenue, given the increase of AV over the last 10 years? Or is it just, are you just showing the pennies and then figuring the rate, and then the rate is figured out, and then it's subject to the 1% limit?
So it's something closer to the second option.
All right.
The levy was set as, the levy gets set in the beginning, so the first year of the levy, January 1st of 2014 for this levy, the rate is figured against the combined assessed value for the region, for King County. After that point, the levy can only grow at the rate of inflation. So it's a levy that is not capped at 1%. It was a levy that was capped at CPI, the Consumer Price Index, but that's essentially inflation. And so what happens is, on an annual basis, the assessor looks at that overall rate of what the total revenues can be, can grow based on inflation, say, from 2014 to 2015. And then it has to be sorted out on a per-household basis. It's a reason why, over time, that although we started this levy with an 18.77 cent rate, that the effective rate actually changes year by year, because assessed value has gone up on a, for each household over that time. And it's why we could start in 2014 with an 18.77 cent rate, and in 2020 have a 13.10 cent rate, and actually be able to cover inflation during that time. Does that happen?
That's helpful, thank you.
Okay.
Yes.
I don't see any more questions. Do you have anything else from us?
Well, we had a couple more slides on the Land Conservation Initiative. How are we doing on time? Do you have more time? Okay. So as Katie mentioned, the Land Conservation Initiative is an effort to protect the last best places. Collectively, the county and cities have identified nearly 65,000 acres as the last-best places to protect. Those are in the following categories: urban green space, farmlands, forests, natural lands, trails, rivers. The county very much views the Land Conservation Initiative as a regional effort. We worked with all 39 cities to understand and identify city green space acquisition needs. Samamish, for example, identified just over 200 acres of greenspace that's been baked into the vision. What we were talking about a minute ago was sort of what, you know, is being looked at potentially for the next six-year levy. The Land Conservation Initiative is a 30-year initiative. And so when we look at each individual city, we're trying to understand what's the acreage, but then what's also the cost that might stem from that acreage? And with Samamish, it was just over 200 acres and about $55 million, if you think about a 30-year inflated number. And so as we, you know, have mapped out what would it take to complete this initiative, we take those numbers and bake them into the solutions that we're trying to design and put forward. So it sort of also relates to the earlier question about is Samamish needs going to be factored in? Next slide. So there was an advisory group, a Land Conservation Initiative Advisory Group, that met over about an 18-month period in two phases, and they gave us a series of recommendations in a report at the end of 2017. This slide summarizes those recommendations. Their primary recommendation originally was to run forward a ballot measure, to reset the Conservation Futures Tax back up to its original amount of 6.25 cents per thousand. Those same dynamics that Katie's been talking about, about AV growing quickly and a dropping effective rate, has been happening on, on Conservation Futures. And the Conservation Futures Tax now is about 3.7, 3.8 cents per thousand. And so the recommendation from the advisory group was to reset it at 6.25 cents. And if you did that, it would generate enough money. If you could raise it and then keep it there over the next 30-year period, it would raise enough money along with the match that people would have to bring to the table to complete the vision, all the acreage that had been identified by King County and all of the cities. The, the decision-makers decided that 2018 was not a good year to run a ballot measure because of the McCleary funding solution for, for education. And so the advisory group came back with a, a second recommendation around funding, and that's what you heard a little bit about a few minutes ago, about consider adding something to the parks levy to, to help fill that funding gap. Other recommendations that the advisory group put forward were to form an open space equity cabinet, to, in addition to protecting the last great places, make sure that every neighborhood in King County, every community has good proximity and access to green space. The advisory group recommended that we, we waive the CFT match requirement for areas that are considered equity areas. And those areas are defined as more than a 10-minute walk away from green space, bottom third of income as measured by Census Tract, and top third of health disparities, heart disease, asthma, diabetes, also as measured by Census Tract. The advisory group recommended we continue to utilize tools such as the public benefit rating system to protect as much of the 65,000 acres as possible rather than having to buy it all. Increase bonding capacity. So what that means is we have an existing funding stream, the Conservation Futures Tax. It's very reliable, very predictable, and you can bond against it. And we've done some of that in the past, but the county has had a historic practice of never going above 50% of, of the annual CFT revenues to go towards debt service for, for bonding. And the, the advisory group recommended that we increase that to pull capital forward to buy more land more quickly before it's either lost or becomes too expensive. And then finally, the advisory group recommended we consider some changes to the CFT code and process to both enhance acceleration of land acquisition, again, before it's lost and, and/or becomes too expensive, and also to ensure equity. So the work we've been doing since those advisory group recommendations are summarized on this last slide here. As I mentioned, there was no CFT ballot measure put forward. And we're, we're in the, the mode of getting feedback on whether it makes sense or not to add some component for LCI to the parks levy. We, our, our county council passed an ordinance in August of this year doing two things. One, waiving the match for the equity areas as recommended by the advisor group and increasing the bonding capacity against CFT up to 80%. That could free up, up to around 140 to 150 million dollars depending on interest rates at the time of issuance over the next five to six years. Again, that would be dollars that would be available to cities and King County for land acquisition. An open space equity cabinet has been formed. They've met six times and are working on a report and recommendations on how to help ensure equity in the way we do our land conservation work. The CFT committee is also working on potential recommended revisions to CFT process to help ensure acceleration and make it easier for jurisdictions to apply and quickly get funds to secure projects. We hope that cities will be active in the 2019 round of CFT grants. There is going to be more money available through the opportunity to, to bond against CFT. So we hope that cities are, are interested in, in bringing projects forward. And then we, we plan on continuing regular dialogue with our city partners through parks directors, forums, and, and other individual contacts with, with cities. So in the interest of time, I'll stop there and happy to take any questions.
I see none.
Thank you very much for your, for your time.
Thank you.
Thank you to Katie and Bob for joining us this evening. They're on tour, basically 28 cities, I think is what you guys communicate with. So they're pretty busy. I'll also be emailing out that feedback form to all of you this evening so you can have that link and fill that in in the next couple of days if you choose to do so.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Okay, our next agenda item is Lower Commons Master Plan Update in Town Center Plaza. Mr. City Manager?
So we've got to change out a few folks here at the Dia Soul. Kind of take some time introducing, but the next portion of tonight's study session is kind of discussing three different topics, but they all relate together. So we wanted to bring them in front of both the Parks Commission and the council for discussion amongst all of you and feedback to staff. So they're going to include, based around Lower Commons Park, we want to talk about Town Center and the possibility of regional storm waters that relates to those improvements, as well as the Green Spine and what we call the notch property just north of Lower Commons Park as well. So we're going to have a presentation by Anjali Meyer, Deputy Director for Parks. And she's going to walk us through kind of each of these three topics. And then at the end, we'd like some feedback, some, some conversation with you about your hopes and dreams and concerns about this work coming down the pike at us. So, did I drag that out long enough, Anjali? Are you ready?
Yes, thank you.
Okay, so Anjali?
Good evening, Madam Mayor, members of the City Council, Parks and Recreation Commission, and Mr. City Manager. My name is Anjali Meyer and I'm the Deputy Director of the Parks and Recreation Department. Tonight, I will introduce the Lower Commons Master Plan Update project. The main body of the presentation will include a project background of Samamish Commons Park, an understanding of the potential development for Town Center specific to its relation to the Commons Park, and a brief overview of the regional stormwater study and how it would impact the park. Some of this information has been presented to you previously, but tonight we will look at it through the lens of Lower Commons Park. Oh, why is it doing this? Thank you, I'm done. Okay. Okay, apologize. This is, this is a first time for... Okay, let's try this again. All right. So after that, I will turn it to you to understand your hopes, dreams, and concerns as it relates to the Town Center development, the development of the Green Spine, and regional stormwater. Here is a photo from the Fourth on the Plateau. You know that the Lower Commons Park is generally a passive park for 364 days of the year. And then if you've been here on the Fourth of July, it comes alive with about 11,000 people. So just wanted to share that. And let me see if I'm going to do this. Yeah, okay. Project background. So this is a vicinity map to show you where Samamish Commons is located. And here is an aerial of Samamish Commons. Here is a map that shows everything that exists in Samamish Commons today. It comprises of multiple parcels that add up to 39 acres forming the civic campus of the city. Upper Commons is accessed by 228th Avenue to the right. And we have City Hall. I'm going to try enter again. I'll just say, okay, the library and the community center. And we also have the skate park. And then we have the Lower Commons Park. And this is accessible via the Switchback Trail between the Upper Commons and the Lower Commons. Zooming into the Lower Commons Park, there are two parcels that were purchased back in 2002 and together measure about 20 acres. The master plan for this was adopted in 2003 and opened in 2006. For existing features, we have a fairly large wetland that encompasses the southern half of the Lower Commons Park. And the general topography slopes down towards these wetlands. We have rolling greens and a loop trail that many of you have probably walked. We have a spray park, a couple of picnic shelters. We also have a portable restroom and a native plant demonstration garden. The Sween House was renovated and leased across path for a counseling center back in 2010. And around the same time, the parking lot for about 47 cars was built at the north end of the site. And then in 2013, we added a community garden to the Lower Commons Park. Here are a few photos showing the community garden, the picnic shelter, the spray park, and open lawn with trails. There is one more parcel that is a part of Lower Commons Park. It is undeveloped and therefore does not typically show up in our park maps. It is currently used for maintenance storage and is commonly referred to as the notch property. We will look at this in more detail over the next few slides as we study how all this relates to Town Center development. So moving into Town Center, the black outline shows the limits of Town Center. The plan was adopted in 2008 and then the infrastructure plan was adopted a year later in 2009. The red dashed line shows the extents of a Green Spine that is proposed to run in a north-south direction through the Town Center and terminate in Lower Commons Park. The notch property serves to connect and transition the Green Spine to Lower Commons Park. And finally, you can see Samamish Commons shown in purple. It lies within the boundaries of Town Center and forms the Civic Zone or the TCD Zone. This is an aerial vision image from Google Maps of the Lower Commons Park showing its backdrop as it exists today. And this is where the notch property sits. And we also have 225th Avenue right now that really serves as the driveway leading to the Sween House and also is where the, you know, 47 cars are parked off of this driveway. Now, the next slide that I will show you is a rendering that is available on the potential developer STCA's website. And I present it with a disclaimer that it is not a design or an official document that has been submitted to the city. And I, our guess is that it is a rendering of what the proposed development could potentially look like. And here it is. Many of you have probably seen it already. The development to the north of the park is mostly the TCA Zone with mixed use, with commercial development on the lower stories and residential on the upper stories. We have tried to superimpose the outline of the notch property and it's hard to read to see what's going on behind that text. But again, this is not a design. It is a rendering to help visualize the possibilities of the space and how it relates to the Lower Commons Park. So again, you know, you have the driveway that is likely going to be developed more into a road that would probably, you know, punch through the Sween House and go all the way down there. So just wanted to point that out. And here is another rendering, again, from STCA's website of the area taken from the opposite direction looking south onto the park. And again, in red, we've tried to show the limits of the notch property that is owned by the city. This graphic is taken from the Town Center Infrastructure Plan that was adopted in 2009. And here is the Green Spine. And this is about where the notch property sits with the Lower Commons Park south of that. Now, based on the description of the Green Spine in the infrastructure plan, this is how it is supposed to work. The Green Spine measures an average width of about 120 feet along its length or 60 feet on either side of a center line. And the notch property is slightly wider, roughly 150 feet in width. And the Green Spine overall is intended to mainly be a pedestrian connection, though some vehicular circulation on either side is permissible in some stretches. It is anticipated that the Green Spine will be built by the developer dedicated to the city to serve as public open space. In the case of the notch property, it could be developed through some form of a public-private ownership. And here are some visuals of what the amenities in the notch property could look like. We anticipate that this area will serve as the Town Center Plaza, capable of hosting programs such as farmers' markets, festivals, concerts, art performances, and will generally function as the heart of the city. The Green Spine in the infrastructure document is described to have three zones. The primary zone is intended to be a vibrant and active zone with walking, seating, plenty of hardscape, opportunities for art, and described to be the city square. So we believe that the notch property will serve as the primary zone of the Green Spine. The secondary zone is intended to be more park-like with cafes, retail, higher amount of softscape, pocket plazas for quiet gatherings, and some rain gardens. And finally, further north will be the neighborhood transition zone, which will be more passive with a lot more planting and lawns and trails. So with that introduction to the Green Spine and the Town Center, I'll move into regional stormwater. This is the last piece of the presentation. And we will cover regional stormwater as it, again, relates to Lower Commons Park and the notch property only. And most of this information, again, has been presented to City Council and the Parks and Recreation Commission previously and is meant to serve as a refresher. So this slide here shows in blue the existing stormwater ponds and vaults that exist today in the Town Center. And shown here in yellow are the possible number of additional stormwater detention facilities that we could end up with if we didn't have a regional approach. And I think we've commonly referred to as the measles effect or the chickenpox effect. And alternatively, we could end up with fewer facilities as shown here if we consolidated these ponds or vaults using a regional approach. The city's consultant for regional stormwater strategy has looked into the area south of Southeast Fourth Street and the Lower Commons Park and proposes up to three ponds or vaults that we would need to accommodate for this section. An underground vault in the notch property is expected to cover almost the entire footprint and would pick up the stormwater from the area shaded in blue. A second underground vault would be in the general location of the existing rain gardens along the parking lot in the Lower Commons Park and possibly over the community garden. And this would pick up the area shaded in yellow. And lastly, the third open pond would go in the vicinity of the spray park. And this is the area where the slopes flatten out a little in the commons. And it's also the lowest part of the Lower Commons Park. Now, you know, keep in mind, these are just preliminary sketches. These are not intended, these are not fully engineered designs. The open pond shown here could end up being as big as, you know, in length about the size of a soccer field and in width about a third, roughly 70 feet by about 400 feet is what we are showing here. And alternatively, we could have the yellow area have a vault moved further south as shown over here and for the area... shown over here, and for the area shaded in red, in place of an open pond, we could have a vault which would then be a smaller footprint. So here are some options that are being explored, and we are continuing to do so. And you've probably seen many slides of both open pond systems and vaults, and here are a couple showing open ponds. And if designed well, they could serve as great recreational amenities within the park. The obvious disadvantages are they occupy a significant amount of land and require coordination with multiple property owners. And a vault or underground vault has the obvious advantage that you could make use of the space above it. And then the disadvantage is that it is a little more expensive to construct than an open pond, and once again requires coordination with multiple property owners. So with that, we move into next steps. So tonight, we are looking for feedback because as we move into the Lower Commons Master Plan update, we will be addressing the changes that come with town center development, the development of the green spine and the notch property, and lastly, the impact of regional stormwater. And so the big question is who goes first? Do we let the developer figure this out a little bit and wait, or should the city start thinking about it? And as the city enters into discussions with potential developers, we thought it would be important to get feedback from leadership, so that is factored in to the solutions. And that is the purpose of tonight's meeting. I will add that tonight, we are not gonna get into the how, you know, the details of how these public-private partnerships will work. The idea is just, you know, is to stick with the what of what we would build here. And again, important to know what, you know, your thoughts are, your early hopes, dreams, and concerns are. And with that, I will turn it over to Angie.
So, like Anjali said, you know, this is kind of the point in time that we would like to hear from leadership about these projects and moving forward as we work with the developers, we work through our Lower Commons Master Plan update. So we would like to hear from you tonight on all three of these. Your thoughts, if you have concerns, visions for things you'd like to see in the green spine, the Town Center Plaza, Lower Commons Park, and regional stormwater. So that's why we're here this evening, so.
Commissioner Wagner?
Yes. I had a couple questions first, so I understand better. And I'm bringing, let's see, I'm trying to find the number of this slide. So back to the notch. Looking at slide number 13, first of all, the dimensions of the notch, could you tell me again? I didn't realize it included the roads. So the notch, the actual...
The width of the notch is about 150 feet. I think I'm gonna just roughly say it's a little over 200 feet in length.
Right. And then the, how much of that would be road?
Well, and that's part of what we're starting to work with, with the developers have conversations about, are there roads on all sides of the notch, on one side of the notch? Typically, when you have two adjacent property owners and there's development, they will share the road, basically, you know, kind of half and half on that for improvements. But that's part of the conversations moving forward that we need to keep in mind with the developer. If you're supportive of roads adjacent to the notch property, we'd like to hear that. If you're opposed to roads next to the notch property, we'd like to hear that. Keeping in mind that roads can also work as great flex space during events, that you can kind of close off those roads at intersections and bring in, you know, your vendors, food trucks, canopies, and you can flex that space into more usable space during events as well. So roads can be more than just roads when you think about it, so.
Okay. Being that said, my concern, my fear, is that the actual walking part of it, that's not a road currently, and I hear that you can shut the roads down.
Right.
But it really does influence the site's ambiance and safety of people being in the area. And then I'm wondering, are there setbacks on the buildings around the notch? Because I'm thinking if you have 4th of July and I've heard that maybe you would use that as a place for people to be. If you have buildings that are 70 feet high on each side, straight up, it's gonna be hard to, how would you see the fireworks?
Right. We have to give them shot extra high. Right, and those are all considerations. So I hear your concerns are building height and proximity to the notch and...
And also, how much does it trim on the notch if you put roads there?
Right.
I have concerns about roads surrounding it. Like, right now, it's all, looking at that picture, it's all sides.
Yep. Thanks.
Councilmember Valderrama? I thought you were. Okay, Councilmember Stewart?
Great, thank you. One of the questions I have, as you talked through the regional stormwater options and you showed us ponds and vaults, you talked a little bit about pros and cons, but could you give us pros and cons in terms of the environmental impacts? You know, what options do you feel are best for the environment?
There's, we might get Kelly up here too as well. We're not the regional stormwater experts, but the built facilities are for retention, detention, and treatment of stormwater. So the water that comes out of any of the facilities are clean by the time it works its way back into Ebright Creek and on its way to Lake Samamish and beyond. So that in mind, there are actually pros and cons, obviously, to vault versus an open pond as far as aesthetics too, right? That vaults, you can kind of create some flat space in an otherwise sloped park, but open ponds have probably some different aesthetics that are assumed with that.
Right.
So Kelly, did you want to add some of, anything to that?
Yes, Kelly Hildy. Unless it's invisible, there is not one here, so here we go. Kelly Hildy, Planning Manager here at the city of Samamish. And actually, I'm going to defer to our consultant, Paul Fuschel, with KPG to answer this question.
Essentially, good evening. The difference with the regional versus non-regional is maintenance by the city for the regional facilities to help water quality. And when you have a whole bunch of vaults, you have to rely on private developers too, and those owners of those parcels to maintain that water quality. So there's better control by city maintenance of these. In terms of open vault versus open pond, or closed vault versus open pond, the water quality, again, is about the maintenance of it. The open pond certainly provides the aesthetic appeal for open space. In the context of the notch, having it covered over with a big public plaza that allows 11,000 people for large events is a huge benefit versus an open pond where you only just have one use, which is essentially water storage during storm events.
Cam, I think you need a microphone just so it's...
So I understand the, you know, the use and the aesthetics. What I'm wondering is which ones have any advantages or do they have advantages in terms of the water quality? So you mentioned maintenance, having a regional storm versus non-regional, we can control the maintenance and therefore have a much more control over the water quality. But what about pond versus vault in terms of not just water quality but other environmental impacts? So there were some questions raised during public comment about are there any downsides to having a vault? Does that somehow change the, I don't know, the flow of the water or anything like that in terms of the downstream? So if you could address those concerns, that'd be great.
So actually, the release of the water is an engineering design issue. So they're equal in that regard for how you release water downstream to the downstream, all the different repairing corridors. That's an equal. The maintenance is really maybe the difference. It's not a water quality difference because you're releasing it. It's the maintenance of both of those facilities to assure that the water's coming out clean. But they both come out clean. In the context of town center and Lower Samamish Commons Park, I would say that within town center, a covered vault allows for public open space, plaza space, which is a huge advantage. Within the context of the park, an open pond can be a public amenity. And so it's not one or the other, it's really the context that matters.
I will add, from an environmental standpoint, you know, again, it's engineering, it's our state requirements, ecology requirements that really drive that. But with an open pond, you do have an opportunity to support habitat. We do have a habitat corridor to the south, that large wetland, so this, that could be a bonus benefit to an open pond. But again, the environmental advantages are, is one better than the other. Again, it comes down to site design, programming, and really the overall vision and goal.
Councilmember Valderrama?
Yes, so the first question that you were asking about the notch property and roads and that, I like the way it's depicted here on slide 13, that rendering on that. I had the fortune with Don Jaren to go to Brookdale Village in North Carolina, and I encourage people to look at that online because the same designer-architect is doing this one that had done that. And we were able to go during the peak times, and first of all, they were able to get the traffic moving, even though it's a 20-year-old development moving smoothly. But this became the center of community activities. And the green spine, while they programmed those activities, it also allowed the flow of people wanting to walk around there and to go. So it gave a real sense of community, so I'm very supportive of that. As far as the question of the regional stormwater issue, who goes first? Previously, STCA had come and given public testimony with one of their geologists that they were looking at a potential site that could have an outwash, a natural outwash, and natural infiltration for a lot of the water that's coming through. And that would present a different dimension in being the major aggregator to be able to do that. So I think it would behoove us to allow them to continue to look at that and present to us what is available and possible, because the original town center plan, it was encouraging natural infiltration and that versus the vault. So that would be the first case. And then based upon that, we then see where the rest of the water and everything else would be going. And I'd be curious as to, now that the first phase has been released under the MOU that was agreed, then the timeframes for how this is being looked at progressing.
Commissioner Hibner?
Yes, I just had a quick follow-up question to Kelly about the stormwater vaults. Is it possible to do a combination of an open pond and a vault, or is it all one or the other?
Well, I'm not a civil engineer, but I believe you can do a co... I don't know. I don't know the answer. I'm just gonna stick with that. I would just say that, like, it's again a context issue. The cost of an underground vault is building a large structure versus the earthwork. So there would have to be context to be putting those side by side. I think that probably the cost of one over the other would be less expensive than somehow some combination unless you did some highly orchestrated urban design, open feature and closed plaza and tried to make them work. One of the things that was discussed with the notch is to have it expand into the park, some plaza space so that it connects directly to the park, that events and so forth are really linked to Lower Commons. And so the details of that haven't been worked out, but the whole idea is to have a place for 11,000 people that really link it to the commons, so the town center and commons are linked, so.
Councilmember Ross?
The rendering on slide 13 is an impressive outcome. Is that consistent with the current zoning?
Yeah, I can answer that. So that's a concept developed by STCA. It is not part of an official application to the city, so I cannot answer that question if it is consistent with zoning.
Deputy Mayor Moran?
And the placements where we are seeing vaults or where we're seeing possible water displays or ponds, are they, are they close to, or have we worked with to put them where we've got the karas or where we've got the water tables? Because I know they're really deep in some of those areas, so have we looked to see where the deepest wells are and where the karas are from the water district and that sort of stuff?
Yes, again, as Anjali mentioned, the siding and the size has been from kind of a very high level. I think when we're looking at karas, infiltration, we're gonna need to do more site-specific studies, and that is part of the scope of work for the regional stormwater strategy to do that so we can inform this plan, we can verify that it would actually work, and it can actually inform really good code writing. So we have some good background information to reference when we do so.
Commissioner Way?
Yes, so it's been mentioned that the average width of the green spine is 120 feet and the average width of the notch is 150 feet. Are those gonna be, is that parallel, or is there gonna be nooks and crannies? I'm just saying that 120 feet isn't very wide for a community function. So it would seem to me that we want spots where it's wider and maybe spots where it's narrower. So that would be my feedback on designing the green spine and TCA's plans, because we can't really have an effective community gathering in such an aerospace. For me personally, an open pond stormwater detention community system is much more aesthetically pleasing than a concrete bunker underground, even though it might give us a community area. The beauty of fireworks reflected in a pond on the 4th of July and the birds and wildlife that an open system would give us is a very powerful image.
Okay, Commissioner Gupta?
Yeah, I just wanna agree with Nancy's comments. I think having an open pond system held to the standard that our parks are currently designed to, I think everyone agrees that Samamish has some gold standard parks. Something designed to that standard, especially with the large wetland just south of that fence, that could be a really powerful place as it transitions into the, what will eventually become town center. If it's done well, I think it'll be a really bright spot for Samamish. I do also have, in the three or four slides outlining the different options for stormwater, it mentions the potential road connection from around the back of City Hall to that connection. And I know that was something that was discussed before. I continue to have concerns about that on the impact of the park. I know there are more considerations that go into that, but I want to make sure we take a very close look at how necessary that piece is because of the impact of the, that it'll have on Lower Commons.
Councilmember Ritchie?
I'm really impressed with what you've done as far as putting together the three different zones. I think it's gonna be great. I think it gives us all a, there's something for everyone in what's been designed or what's been laid out here. I think a mix of vaults and open water features and the aesthetics of that, I think it's great. I think that's what we're trying to figure out is what's the right solution for a diverse city with a diverse landscape and diverse topography. And what you propose, or what you've laid out here as far as the usage of the green spine and the different aspects of the stormwater issue, I think it's great. I mean, if we can pull this off, I think it's gonna be great. I think it's gonna definitely solve a lot of problems. I think it's gonna be the town center more than just the focal point of the city. It's gonna be a place where we can actually, people can come and do a lot... It's gonna be a place where we can actually, people can come and do a lot of different things that they wanna do, not just one thing. So I would encourage us to try to seek the diversity of answers that you've provided here in our final workup so that we can try to have a little bit for everybody.
I'm really sorry about that. But I can't fix my, I can't fix my vocal cords, you know? They're just born with them. I'd like to get back to what Nancy said. In our parks meetings, we've spoken often about what it would look like to have another water feature in lower commons. And water features are always wonderful. People love them, they look beautiful, people gather around them. And there are just so many opportunities for us with a water feature, so I'm on board with that. And we've also talked about the green spine quite a bit. And I want to agree with Nancy here. This narrow strip of 120 feet really needs to have a lot of variation in it, not just what we've seen tonight, but in terms of width. Because it, and of course, we'd like it ideally even to be wider, if that was possible. And the third thing is that I, what I don't quite understand about the notch is are we really going to have a busy road on one side of it? Is that correct? That will cut it off from the park.
Are you talking about the road on the south side of the notch?
Yes.
Right, which, yeah, which is kind of now the drive aisle into Sween House, right? That would turn into a road.
So we're talking about this great connection into Town Center, but that road, which is probably inevitable and necessary, will really cut that. So how do we mitigate that at any rate?
Yeah, and I appreciate your concerns about, there are some ways to kind of create pedestrian priority facilities for crossing of roads and give some priority to foot traffic. But I do understand your concern, and we'll definitely make note of it.
Thank you.
Okay, we'll go back around for round two here in a second. So just a few thoughts. Mentioned the parking at the Commons Park may be in jeopardy. I think we were just talking about that road. Do we have a vision of where those would move to if they are, if they disappear by a road? I mean, are we considering people would be parking then within the confines of Town Center somewhere? Or are we relocating the parking? Because there are people that will come from outside Town Center that will still want to park at the park.
Yeah, we will still need to provide parking at the park as its own entity, right? When we do improvements or create a public facility, we have to provide parking for that facility. So I definitely see some form of parking along that improved road.
Okay, so still probably in the general vicinity then of where it is currently?
Right, because I think we have 47 parking spots currently associated with lower commons park, so I'd assume that number, if not more.
Okay. Another bit of feedback, I know there was, one of the iterations had the community garden disappearing.
Right, no. We don't wanna take the community garden away. We've actually talked about that being an underground vault and the community garden being on top of the vault. And it would actually, if we built the vault underneath the garden, bear with me, but we'd lift the garden, build the vault, and then actually have the opportunity to possibly expand the garden at the same time, which we've been desperately trying to find ways to create more community garden space as well. So it would actually be a bonus to do that type of work.
Okay. And then I do have a question to follow on. What is the lifespan of a vault?
Paul, how about that? Get that man a microphone.
I'll be honest, I don't really know the answer to that question. Because I'm not a stormwater engineer.
I mean, I know they have a lifespan and-
Oh yeah, they definitely have a lifespan. I'm, I'm gonna guess on the range of 20 to 30 years as a concrete structure, depending on maintenance.
Does that mean we're re-digging it up and redoing it potentially? I mean, if it has a lifespan of 20 to 30 years, let's just say for argument's sake it's even longer, maybe.
Yeah.
You're having to redo that entire structure.
I wouldn't think there'd be redoing, I mean, we don't do that with current vaults, but repair, renovation, but we will definitely look into that for you.
I think that would be a big consideration for me as to whether or not it would go-
Absolutely. Is it 50 years, is it, you know, 100 years?
Well, and then there's impact of the park again, if you're doing renovation to the vault. The other thing I would introduce is to a potential risk, or at least a question I have related to a risk, is earthquake. I mean, if you have a lot of stormwater in there, we have, the headwaters for Ebert Creek are right there. That could be disastrous if there was something and it broke open and you had a flood of water running down there. Whereas, I'm assuming if you have an earthquake and it's an open pond, there's no risk of fracturing and the water all getting out. So I think those are just simply questions I might have related to lifespan and the earthquakes risk. And then to answer the question on who goes first, I don't know if I have an answer, but I think, I don't, I think the city needs to at least be lockstep and barrel on that, if not in the lead. And the reason I say that is that we're all giving input right now on where we, you know, potentially want these facilities to exist. There are certain areas where they need to exist based on gravity. But I think, I remember hearing even that LID area that was mentioned for, you know, potential outwash isn't actually a very ideal place. And so I think the city needs to be working in conjunction with the developer or any developer in the future on where placement for those facilities go to make sure that they're congruent with, you know, our needs and the desire for the Town Center. So those are my thoughts. Okay, now we're gonna go back around. Oh, wait, we've got one more, who's first round? Commissioner Hupus?
Can I ask, does anybody know how wide the space is out here that the current farmer's market is on? We've had comments on 120 feet. How wide the space is out here that we have community functions on all the time? It doesn't, I don't know.
Right, so the space between City Hall and the library, oh boy, I'm gonna get put on the spot here, but I would imagine 75 yards or so, not quite the length of a football. If you took a football field, so think about a football field, right? Get a visual on a football field, that's 300 yards long.
300 feet?
Three, 300 feet, right? It's a long football. It's cougar football, it's different. No wonder we haven't been winning. Right, so I would say the width across here is, you know, 75 by maybe 100. So the plaza space that we would be looking at, the Town Center Plaza space up there is 150 feet wide. So I'd say at least twice as wide as the edge of the City Hall to the library. Well, in inches, it would actually be- Next time we're bringing the tape measure.
This doesn't seem as big as a football field to me.
No, I would agree, I would agree.
No. But I would, I would say, to visualize, right, twice as wide as what you see out here for the open space wide is probably what the new Town Center Plaza would be, ballpark, pardon the pun.
That's what I'm thinking, we host events here all the time and-
No, the new, the new notch would be probably twice as wide as this, at least.
No, she's saying this is more like 75 feet and the notch is 150.
I'm changing it all to feet. To metrics.
Centimeters, what would it be in centimeters, Ann?
So I'm just trying to give you a visual. So visual right now, we're not talking feet, yards, inches or anything, the visual outside right now between City Hall and the library, the new notch would be probably twice that wide.
That's what I was thinking because the farmer's market is here.
I think we better measure that.
We'll get dimensions.
Yeah, dimensions would be good.
We will get dimensions.
That's smaller than that, though.
There you go.
I think personally that's plenty of space. And the rendering with the one way on one side and another on another. I've lived in a city very similar to this rendering. In one part, there looks like there's a parking garage surrounded. And I know this isn't an official, but, you know, having the parking garages kind of masked by the retail on the outside, in this, in this rendering, looks very close to the lower commons park. I, just based on the discussion we just had with the size of this space where we hold farmer's market and the Fourth of July, every, you know, farmer's market all summer, that it's plenty of space with less parking than they have, you know, you would have in this scenario. So I, like I said, I've lived in a city where they have the nice transition between, you know, where you would be walking across the lower commons to the notch property and, you know, lots of flashing lights and trees and everything. I just think it, I think it's a lot more space than we're thinking in.
Councilmember Stewart?
Okay, I just, for the record, I had these questions before, I just didn't get to ask them all. Anyway, it's still my round one, no, just joking. So my other questions that we didn't get to, we talked about the environmental concerns. But one of the other things is that the regional stormwater solutions you were talking about were really just for the southern part of the Town Center. Is that just because that's only the areas where we would be talking about regional storm solutions on city property? Because there's really a whole part of the Town Center area that we didn't look at.
Yes, actually, it's been some time since we've provided a presentation of regional stormwater planning for Town Center. So because of the topography and the grade and how Town Center slopes, what you're looking at for the impact to lower commons is what we call sub-basin B. And that really captures the stormwater for the southwest quadrant, a majority of the southwest quadrant of Town Center. So that would, that would accommodate Phase 1 development for STCA. It would, it would accommodate stormwater from the development of the Lou property next door. And of course, lower commons park, as it becomes, as the master planning for the development of lower commons park is considered, it would capture that stormwater as well.
So the other parts of Town Center that aren't in there would have separate solutions that we're not talking about today?
Exactly, exactly.
And then, do you have a timeline? You talked about a regional stormwater plan. What's the timeline for developing that plan?
So we are now working on a draft scope and fee with our consultant, and that should be coming to council by the end of the year for approval. And then we will get started on that shortly thereafter. So the timeline is probably looking at most to 19 and a little rollover into 2020.
So I think that answers your who goes first question because it doesn't sound like we're ready to go first in terms of if we're gonna be spending all of 2019 and part of 2020 developing the regional stormwater plan. The developer may be ahead of us. That being said, I would like to see us at least develop, and this may be similar to what the mayor stated, we should at least have sort of a list of criteria that we put forth ahead of anything else that says any solution needs to meet the following criteria. We need to have these things. And I think the feedback you're hearing is that at least one, if not more, of these solutions should be a pond, right? That I think the notch makes sense to be a vault so that we can use the area on top of that for our community gatherings, but that the other two options, we should seriously consider ponds where that may make sense because they are beautiful and can provide that additional habitat area. But I would definitely like to see us working hand in hand with all of the developers, but definitely setting the lead in terms of whatever you suggest is great, but it has to meet the needs of the community, the needs of the environment, and the needs of the city, so.
Commissioner Wagner?
Towns that I've really liked the way that they've done their plazas is that there's a setback in the buildings, meaning that they don't go up 70 feet straight up, so you're in a large canyon. They actually have a setback, so maybe the first two levels are vertical, but then they set back and then go up. So you have more feeling of airiness. And so I would highly recommend that around the notch and the green spine. I have a question in terms of if you take water into the pond and we say that it's a soccer-sized area, how do you get the water there? I assume underground?
Correct.
And then, say if you have a 100-year deluge come down and hit your pond, is there a way to keep it from going downstream to Ebert?
Yes, the water gets to the pond through a conveyance system that's designed as part of the development project. So those are pipes under streets, lack of a more creative way to describe that. And during a 100-year storm, those ponds are actually engineered to handle 100-year storm. And I can actually attest to that. My first project here, working for the city, was overseeing the driveway and the parking down in lower commons park with those three rain gardens. And shortly after we built them, we did have a 100-year storm, and I did call the consultant in a panic, saying, is this water going to hold or what's the Plan B? And there, there isn't a Plan B. Those are over-engineered to make sure they can handle the big storm events, so.
And then another concern I wanna, in terms of what Sid said with the potential road that goes through the spray park, I'm very concerned about that because I think it really cuts the thoroughfare that we hope to have a trail along that wetland. It goes up along to the grocery store. And if you put a road in there, it's just gonna make it so much harder for people to get across safely. And so I would really not like to see one there.
Councilmember Ross?
On the vaults, one of the disadvantages that requires coordination with multiple property owners, with the aggregation of the Town Center property, doesn't that eliminate or significantly mitigate that disadvantage?
Oh, actually, I'm gonna turn to Paul, he's raising his hand. He doesn't need a mic.
If the question is, are there less vaults because we do larger regional vaults, does that help with the maintenance of the facilities? Is that the question you're asking?
No, I'm referring to the second bullet on disadvantages, requires coordination with multiple property owners. And with the aggregation of property, is that disadvantage eliminated or significantly mitigated?
And actually, I can answer this one here, Paul. So with this area, the southwest quadrant of Town Center that we're talking about, we, we do have a developer STCA that does own or have under contract a majority of those parcels, but we do have some parcels still under private ownership. And we do have the Lou property, and of course, we have ourselves. So we're looking at, I believe, four or five parties. Well, eliminate us, we don't need to negotiate with ourselves, but between private and developer-owned properties.
Commissioner Klein?
When you showed the first picture of the green spine, my immediate thought was it wasn't very green. And I guess my initial vision was much more lawn space, open space, trees. And it looked more like an arcade to me than a green spine. So I just, I questioned that. Also, just for reference, I went outside for a second, stepped off. The dimension from the front wall to the back wall is 60 feet, okay? So that gives you some idea. I see some advantages to the vaults in, or we get flat surface space on top of them. I like the idea of the regional stormwater, however, with the water feature. Anjali mentioned the possibility of a pond, I believe that was, you said 400, size of a football field. And if we put that down in the lower commons, I worry that it takes up way too much space. And I'm thinking that maybe the ultimate solution is some kind of a compromise where we have some vaults and we have a smaller, but still a significant water feature, attractive water feature. In my mind, that might be the best solution.
Councilmember Valderrama?
Yeah, thank you. Going back to the green spine on that, again, the one advantage we have and the city has is they can go online to see a number of these that have been developed already and to see how they function. They usually combine large, open spaces that are green and then they have tree area because if you have trees, then it makes it harder to go in. I went online, I was there with Don Jaren during a Christmas celebration that they had. But this is one of their summer celebrations that looks like they've got all of Samamish sitting in there. This picture only shows 80 across and there's roads that are on the other side. So if the dimensions are similar to that, I don't think we're gonna have any problem handling any event our city's gonna be having for a while here. But again, we have the advantage, we can go online and see some of these. But again, we have the advantage, we can go online and see some of these out there, uh, to be able to see what they've been doing and acting. Now, I don't know if they're all that flexible, but that's a different issue.
Hey, Commissioner Hebner.
Uh, I just have two, um, items of feedback. Angie, um, uh, I would like to see public, um, walking paths integrated into the east side of the town center. I know we've been talking a lot about the, um, west side, but that whole east side, and, um, not just down 228th. That's a really loud walk.
Yes.
Um, the, the second thing is that, um, I'm definitely interested in the expansion, um, of the community garden, or a second community garden in the area, um, with the building of, or developing of town center and the density that will come with that. I think there'll be, um, a demand for more plots.
Commissioner Way.
Obviously, I don't know how to measure, but, um, the point I was trying to make is instead of just seeing a straight alley, I'd like to see nooks and crannies. Um, and the other thing, uh, that hasn't come up in our discussion, but a number of the people that testified before the meeting started, is that they were concerned that we were using public space for private stormwater. And we've not mentioned that at all as a group. Does anyone in the group object to that?
Yeah, I think we'd, we'd like to actually kind of address that issue, so Kelly, if you'd like to talk to that point.
Sure. Sure. So, um, stormwater facilities on public property would not just treat private development stormwater. It needs to have a mutual benefit, um, because, uh, the public comment that you heard regarding, is it a gift of public funds, is, that's actually something we would have to address if, if we did just treat, um, private stormwater. So this, these facilities would need to treat, um, stormwater for the lower commons. Um, and again, the, the benefit to the city is that these would, um, be managed by the city, um, that we can ensure, um, a greater level of water quality coming out of those facilities before they do, um, drain into the wetlands, Ebroite Creek. Um, but, yes, these are shared facilities, they're not just a single facility for development.
Can I ask a quick follow-on question, though? You said that it would not just be treating private development, but that it would also be treating the, the water in the lower commons. So where is the water in the lower commons right now going?
So...
I assume it's just infiltrating into the ground and...
Yeah, that's dispersion. Um, the, the last facilities, well, from my memory, again, that goes back to 2009 when I started. So the parking lot and that driveway, um, those are treated from those rain gardens that then are conveyed to level spreaders. I believe, um, the other portions of, um, lower commons that were built back in 2000, oh gosh, '05?
2006.
2006. Those, um, again, it was under a different stormwater code, the '98 manual, so I believe those are also, um, treated through infiltration, um, and also through level spreaders. So there are treatment facilities down there, they're just very well camouflaged unless you're looking for them.
Okay, so I guess, my question is then, if there is a, how will the city address the issue of, if we're putting in a facility and it's, you know, treating, you know, 5% of, you know, the, the commons water and the rest of it is private development, you know, what is, what does the city need to do, or what will we, what we're all, what will our plan be in order to deal with that in consideration of what we heard during public comment? Is there anything, if we're dealing with a very small percentage of lower commons stormwater versus private development, as opposed to it being all private development? Does that question make sense?
It, sorry, it does. Um, I guess, you know, any type of new development to lower commons is going to have to meet the, the most current stormwater codes, so those facilities that we have now are probably not sufficient. Um, so we, we have to address that. Um, we, uh, as for, like, the percentage, the shared percentage between lower commons and development, um, again, it, you know, a lot of it, yeah, you're right, would be private stormwater facilities. Again, we would collect fees on maintaining that, so it wouldn't be, we just maintain it at the cost of the city. There would be stormwater fees that would, um, be charged to the developer, um, to, um, to treat that stormwater. Again, I think a lot of this would need to, it's a finer level of detail that needs to be worked out, so we can make sure that we're, we're not violating any, um, estate purchasing laws, um, our purchasing laws. Um, and, uh, yeah, I think that's something we need to further investigate.
Okay. Fair enough.
Can I weigh in?
Yes, please, Tom, go ahead.
Uh, setting the constitutional gift of public land aside, 'cause I think that is an issue, and it should be a partnership with them to even build it, I would hope, too. But, um, I'm, I'm very much in support of vault in the area of the green spine, as Hank said, 'cause I think we need that space. And I understand that the water features can be very aesthetically pleasing, uh, but I'm wondering if we couldn't add those. I mean, we've already got one, two, well, the three ponds shown, I'm looking at slide seven, and you've got the wetland there already. And I think you also need to think about with the, if you have the open water retainer pond, you know, those things have a tendency to ebb and flow during the season, too. So it may be good when it's full, but in the summertime, when things get dry, they may not be quite so aesthetic either, um, which is why I think it might be better to have that vault, especially near the green spine. And maybe in general, but just a, a little bit of a contrary view.
Commissioner Wagner.
Question, who, who pays for the development of the regional water?
The plan or the construction?
I mean, 'cause you've got a significant hillside if you were gonna put wa- a pond in there. Is that, I, I don't know. Is it the city that is gonna pay for all this?
I'm gonna let Kelly answer that question.
Yeah. Again, I think that comes down to an agreement between the city and the developer, and, um, but I would, I would be confident in saying that if we're treating, um, stormwater from a developer, and again, there's that benefit, that mutual benefit, that, that is gonna, that cost is gonna need to be covered by that development project, as it would be if the facility was on their parcel. So, um, they are required to, uh, their development proposal is required to build the infrastructure to support their development, including roads and stormwater facilities. So they would be responsible for that. Now, um, if, if we were moving towards a, say, a development agreement regarding, you know, responsibilities, roles and responsibilities with the city and, um, and the development community on this, uh, I think there are some other terms that can be taken into consideration, but that, again, is that level of detail where we'll need to provide more information to inform, um, council, um, in that decision-making. Did that answer your question? Okay, good.
I don't see any more questions. Angelie, did you have anything?
Oh, I was just going to say that I pulled up the measurements, and the space outside is roughly 110 feet by 250 feet, and then the notch parcel is time and a half. It's 150 feet in width, and then it's about 300 feet long, so I just wanted to leave everyone with that. And I also wanted to, you know, add to what, um, we, uh, the questions we've been getting about the how, and, you know, I tried to tee off the presentation, we really don't have all the answers for how this will play out. They're all great questions, and, you know, ones we have that we are working through as well, and, uh, for now, we're just beginning to see footprints of how big some of these facilities could look, and we wanted to be able to share that tonight.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Well, appreciate it. Okay. Break here for rearrange the room and...
Would it be appropriate to talk a little bit about, um, Big Rock Park Parcel B?
Oh, yeah, you, I, there was some public comment. Angie, do we have time to...
We're fine, yeah. If the, if the Parks Commission wants to spend a few minutes kind of talking about that, great, we'll have to entertain that.
I know the members of the council had some concerns about the cost to implement the master plan for Parcel B at Big Rock Park, and I wanted to address some of these, if I can. There was some talk initially about potentially postponing some of the costs. My feeling is that we're gonna have to make improvements at some point. If we postpone the costs until we have a master plan and are ready to develop Parcel C, we still have costs that will be translated, or have to be made at Parcel B at that time. And given a potential of 5% inflation every year, those costs will only be higher than if we don't do those, uh, projects now. Um, and even if we say, "Okay, we are not going to," we, we'd still have to put in the parking and the ADA access at the Freed House, no matter what. Um, so that, that's a cost that can't be eliminated. Another aspect is, um, we're talking about putting $3.8 million for a 20-acre parcel that costs us $0 to purchase. Um, so $3.8 million for 20 acres, compare that now to the Burton property that we just purchased, nine acres for $6 million. We've already spent a lot more for that property and haven't even developed it, and it's only nine acres. So, uh, we've talked about potential ball fields, passive use, active use on the Burton property, you know, I'm, I'm thinking it's gonna cost several million dollars more than it is to develop the, uh, the Parcel B at this point. Uh, and Parcel B, not only did we get it for free, but it's essentially a park already to begin with, so there's tremendous cost savings there to begin with. There was also some concern, or some talk about the possibility of diverting REIT Number One, uh, to pay for traffic, instead of, and taking it away from parks. Um, we're talking perhaps $3 million a year to do that, um, and that not only hurts the parks, but doesn't really make a dent in the, in traffic. There are plans for traffic improvements in the city. I mean, the, the near-term ones are, what, $20, $30 million, the long-term ones are double that. $3 million a year, in my mind, is insignificant, and, but it's a very significant detriment to the development of the parks. So I'm hoping that when it's time to make the decision, that you will say, "Let's go ahead." I mean, this park, we acquired Parcel B almost two years ago, and it hasn't been open to the public yet, and it's a tremendous asset. City of Samamish is, uh, well-recognized for its beautiful parks, both locally and nationally, and I'd hate to see us, uh, take money away from the parks and, uh, defer the development of Parcel B. Thank you.
Are there any other commissioners that wanted to add on?
I will add on to that.
Okay, please.
Um, I think to fail to, to fund this project this, at this time, is very disrespectful and disingenuous to Mary's generosity to the city. If we are holding her donation of C, the property that she lives on, until we complete B, that is really offensive, and that we should go forward, this she worked on, B, with the master plan, um, and, uh, for us to not go forward with her wishes, uh, is, is just not an appropriate action by our city. So I would really encourage us to go forward.
Commissioner Leo.
And just to add what Nancy said, Mary Piggott built a treehouse for 3/4 of a million dollars on this property. Uh, so she is investing a considerable amount for our benefit. I mean, not only gave us a property, but spent a lot of money to further develop it in hopes that it would be open and a tremendous amenity for the public, and I, I agree with Nancy, it's tremendously disingenuous and disrespectful if we just say, "Well, thanks for doing that, but we're not gonna open it yet."
Commissioner Hooper.
Sorry, I missed your card up before.
I agree with them. I mean, I've only been on the commission since January, but we've talked a lot about this, and spent a lot of time, and put a lot of thought into it, and the treehouse is something that, you know, there's some chatter around the community about it, and wondering why there's no access to it, and we, and I, and I really agree with Hank when it comes to diverting $3 million a year for traffic. I think that should be for the parks.
Very good.
Oh, Sid, sorry, it was like...
Yeah, I just, I wanna add my support. I think, uh, we're getting a tremendous bargain with this donation. How often do you, I mean, forget getting the entire property donated to the city, how often do you even get a chance as a city to have that much land in the center, you know, that close to the, the center of the city, to be preserved as parkland? And add on to that, the parcel was donated, it's one of three parcels that's being donated, and I, I, I just, I don't see how we could defer opening the park. I think it's, it's a tremendous benefit to the city, it's tremendous value, it just makes all sorts of sense to, to open this park with the master plan that we've designed in concert with the residents who live around it.
Commissioner Lo.
Um, I want to agree with the other commissioners. I think this is a gem in the middle of our city, and, um, we will be growing, and it's incumbent upon us to provide open space, recreational opportunities, and connection to nature, to all the people who are going to be coming up here.
Very good.
Parks Commission, we really appreciate you coming here this evening with us and talking about some important subject matter. Appreciate your thoughts relative to Big Rock Park as well. So I think we're gonna take a break here, rearrange the room a little bit, and then we'll move up there. I believe we have the public work standards next, even though I can't see it yet. Yes, public work standards by annual update. Mr. City Manager.
Yes, Madam Mayor, members of the council, I'm gonna call on Mr. Lenashewski if I can get him free, oh. Who has this? Okay, take it away.
Good evening, Mayor, councilmembers. I'm Andrew Zager, city engineer. I'm here to kind of do a brief little introduction for this year's biannual update to the public work standards. Um, as, as was stated in public comment earlier, we're actually updating them a lot more regularly than was done before, uh, and with the old standards and compared to the new ones. This update is to focus on technical, uh, technical little details, typos and clarifications only. We're not trying to get into policies or anything where we have to do a broader range type of details. Included in, actually, and then that's really what the purpose of this meeting, is just to kind of discuss what the purpose of the edits are, um, and then go over our proposed schedule that we have. And then included in your packet, uh, was a very lengthy PDF of the public work standards that were redlined, clouded with the, some of the proposed edits. There was also a PDF or a summary, uh, table showing all the proposed edits, what page, what chapter, uh, what the amendments were, and then what the text changes. And, like I said, most of them were generally just typos, uh, changing some of the clarifications that we've heard throughout the last couple of years through implementation, and then adding some details and some technical little, uh, clarifications that we've had through reviews. And at this time, uh, would just like to open it up, if there's any questions, or if there's any thing that, uh, the council have read or wanted to address, uh, we can go through some of the edits on the table. And there will be other opportunities, obviously, we will be coming back to council, uh, as these edits are going.
I have no lights at this moment, Andrew.
Great. So, so our next steps, and obviously...
Deputy Mayor Moran, sorry.
Okay.
But that's only just 'cause we're just reading this.
No problem.
So don't go too far.
Well, I'm, you know where to find me.
So that wasn't a question about the, about the work standards? Okay. Yes, everyone's got their nose buried in papers up here.
I've, I've got one comment.
Please, Tom, go ahead.
Kudos for updating it sooner rather than 15 years later.
That is our intent.
It does say biannual update, so...
Yes.
We'll be seeing this again in another two years.
And the next, and ideally, the next two years will address some of the topics that have already been... have already been discussed in front of council, dealing with the town center, transportation master plan, all the other things that we'll see more into the policies will, obviously, will affect the public work standards. So the next update will probably be a little more of a major update than what we have today. And then the next steps, obviously, working on this month and into December, working on getting the drafts, the draft clarifications, getting the edits done. We're going to be proposing to, obviously, since there's a, the public work standards are adopted by code, we have to go through a SEPA process and go for a DNS, and then obviously submit the proposed to the Department of Commerce. And then in January, we'll have to have a public hearing and an ordinance adopt, adoption, excuse me, to adopt the new standards and then clarify some of the verbiage in the municipal code. And so we're looking at doing December and hopefully in January, early February to accomplish this whole task. And then, obviously, the last slide, and then I added a few pictures from this morning from our job on Lewis Thompson Road. So any other questions, obviously, email, phone, any comments, any suggestions, and we can incorporate them. And then when we schedule the next public meeting, public meeting, and obviously the hearing, we can add to or subtract some of the comments that are on the table.
I still have no lights.
That's how I like it.
Might have been the shortest agenda bill ever.
Well, that I have nothing else.
If council doesn't have any questions.
Great, well, thank you.
All right, perfect. Thank you, Andrew.
Do we get recess again?
I don't think so. But you're welcome to go get more sun chips.
I don't know. I don't know.
Okay. So our next agenda item is the roadway corridor and segment capacities and level of service standards options. Mr. City Manager.
Yes, Madam Mayor, I'll ramble on here for a few minutes while we round up the rest of our team that needs to be in here for this one. But we are gathered here again this evening to talk about concurrency, particularly V over C. And there are a number of answers that we are looking for from the council in regards to what that number will be, as well as if there are any segments that you want to address any differently. Over the weekend, you emailed me a number of different questions, and we've been working on those today to get those ready for you. And you have those at your place this evening. And I would like just to hit a couple of high points on there. It would be, we'd be in a little bit different position if we had the TMP, we'd be taking maybe a more thorough look at where we're at today and what we need to be, what needs to be done. But council had directed us to set that aside as we worked on the concurrency model. And so therefore, what we're doing today is going to be a bit of a shorter-term look at the present time. So as we'd say in Texas, as we go through time, you're going to have a little bit more fixing that you're going to have to do to, as you get down that road. Also, too, one of the questions you had asked, and I'm not going to go through all of these, is what is the staff's recommendation? Though my administration here is fairly short, I cannot give you a recommendation because I am uncertain of where the council wishes to go in regards to the city's development. However, we can advise, based on the numbers that Cheryl's going to talk to you about here in a bit, that council's in kind of a tough spot. You're a little bit damned if you do and damned if you don't. If you set the number too low, you're going to be accused of trying to shut everything off. And if you set it too high, you're going to be accused of letting everything through the door. We do know that if you set that number too low, and I've given you some figures there, that that's going to prohibit any additional development at the present time because you have some roads that are going to be in failure. So you might want to look at some fluctuation between where you set that number and maybe a couple of corridors. You may want to set those a little different so you can move forward. But with that, I'm going to turn it over to Ms. Paston so she can kind of talk with you about the chart she just handed out to you at this moment.
Thank you, Mr. Interim, or Mr. City Manager, sorry. I was going to say, thank you, Mr. ICM.
We're all just interim.
Mayor, council, again Cheryl Paston and Kendra Breland to my left. This is the, pretty much the same table that was in your packet. The only change is the middle option, where it says the corridor of less than 1.1 and the segment of less of one, of less than 1.38. And that correction, it was showing that the segment was 10% over the 1.1. And Mayor rightly pointed out that at the last meeting, council had asked for all the segments to be 25% over whatever the corridor number was. So you'll see the changes there of what fails and what passes in each of the three scenarios. Again, for the viewers' benefit, the three scenarios that we looked at was the corridor being less than or equal to 1.1, and no one segment could be less than, or sorry, could be greater than 1.25. The second option was the corridor had to be less than 1.1, and no one segment could be greater than 1.38. And then the third one is the corridor needed to be less than 1.25, and the segment had to be less than 1.56. So the two tables you have are the 2016 existing conditions, and then what I have here up on the screen is the 2024 pipeline conditions.
Yeah, just to make sure we're all on the same page, what is included in the 2024 pipeline?
We've provided some of that information to council in the past, but just at a high clip, what's included in the 2024 pipeline from the land use perspective, it's the, essentially the concurrency applications that have already been approved. That's so essentially approved development within the city. It's also, it's got some assumptions of regional growth, which is essentially just, we've looked at Issaquah and Redmond kind of neighboring cities and just kind of annualized out the growth that they're expecting in the long term. Of course, we don't have their concurrency applications, so we've just kind of straight-lined the growth that they're expecting over their growth horizons to take into account six years' worth of growth. And then on the transportation side, it's the projects that were approved in your 2019 through 2024 TIP. So that would include Issaquapine Lake Road improvements, phase one, Issaquafall City Road improvements, and then some of the other intersection improvements that were included within the six-year TIP.
So just to clarify, when you talk about the neighboring growth, you're talking about you factored in what you think Issaquah and Redmond will grow. You haven't factored in any estimated growth for Sammamish. So the only growth factored in there for Sammamish would be already approved applications. Is that correct?
It's the growth that we would anticipate that would be in place by 2024.
So it, so there is some estimated growth in there?
It's...
Not just approved applications?
I believe that it is the approved concurrency applications. I'd have to check with their modeler, there's a chance that for some of that residential growth, we might have some assumed growth. I'd have to follow up on that answer for you.
We need to understand that because we need to know if there's any estimated or if that's just, it's just what's in the pipeline today and that's it versus it's the pipeline plus some assumed growth. I think that's a really critical point for us to understand as we make these decisions.
Can I ask a clarifying question? And I appreciate what, appreciate what council member...
Stewart.
Sorry. I'm sorry, Pam. The, Kendra, you just said that it includes the project on the tip, but yet in the 2024 table, we're showing things on the tip as still failing in the first two scenarios of 1.0 or 1.1. So it really doesn't include the tip. Is that correct? Because if you included the tip, you wouldn't have those failures, would you?
Well, just to, just to respond to that question, the, in what we're showing on this first page, of course, is 2016. And that, of course, does not include projects in the tip. For 2024, we are assuming projects that are in the tip. And again, remember the kind of two-step process we're going through here. We're developing the numbers in terms of the volume estimates for 2024 from the model. So the model is assuming some of those improvements are in place. Within what we're assuming for the capacities on this table, it's using kind of the HCM plus formulas, which, you know, we tried to explain in your packet. It's essentially those, it starts with those, it begins with the HCM capacities, but then it provides some additional capacity credits for the presence of a left turn, a right turn, or a median. And again, this is using HCM formulas, so, you know, they're not maybe a Sammamish-specific as we'd like, but these are based on kind of national standards. So if I can...
I'm still confused because I still don't understand that you're telling me for the current, let's just take an example, Sahali, 228th Avenue, North Corridor, line between lines eight and nine. And let's assume for a second corridor less than 1.0 and segment less than 1.25. You're saying even with the current Sahali project that we have on the tip, if that was built, you know, this is not a good example, I want to go to the last sheet, the 2024, because that really builds it out in 2024, what happens, same line between eight and nine. It's, if it was funded, and you, we assume that something on the tip is going to get done, whether it's funded or not on the tip, if it's assumed to be done, you're telling me it would still fail at a 1.0 or 1.25?
Councilmember Hornish, this is Cheryl. So Sahali is not funded on the tip, that's why you're seeing it continuing to fail. And then for Issaquapine Lake...
Let's choose one that's...
Sorry. For Issaquapine Lake, it's segment 33, that is also not funded in the next six years, six-year tip.
Which one is segment 33? Sorry.
Oh, that's the Issaquapine Lake, 46th to 48th. That's phase two, and that is not funded in the tip. And then, of course, the parkway you've not included. So that's why you're seeing the failures in, in the pipeline.
But if they were funded, they wouldn't be failures. Is that correct?
If they were funded, that is correct.
Okay. Councilmember Stewart, your light's still on. Do you have another?
Oh, okay. Wait, I think I have a floor for a second. I'm glad you made the one thing, that if they were, I mean, they are projects on the tip, and assuming they get funded, they would not have failures. Is that correct?
Assuming they're funded and assuming they're completed within that six years, right? The scope...
They've been on the, but Issaquapine Lake's been on the tip for how many years? 12?
That's correct.
And we've assumed it all along that it's not failing because it's on the tip. But we never assumed because it wasn't funded, it was not, it was failing. So are we changing our modeling here?
At times, that project was funded, and then other years, it was not, it was unfunded. And that was completely up to the council. And, you know, in regards to, you know, how you want to fund the tip, that again is up to the, up to the council.
So I'm still asking the question, if the projects on the tip are funded, like we always assumed they were before, we would have no more failures than we currently have under our current tip, assuming even a 1.0. And so the failures wouldn't be failures if we assume that the projects on the tip are funded, like we always have in the past.
That is correct.
All right.
Right. If there is, if there's an existing deficiency and it fails concurrency, we need to correct that deficiency within the six years.
Which we had been planning to do for the last 12. Yeah, all right. Thank you.
And just a quick add-on to that, Tom, this is Steve, Steve Lenashewski, Paltworks. Good evening, everyone. What you had was relative to the metric in place then. So can we by chance say it's going to be the exact same that it would pass a 1.0 now? I'm not sure. The old metric was T8, right? So your design and your implementation project would have been against T8 then. So we would still have to scrutinize this against the 1.0, 1.1, 1.25. But just for apples to apples, it was under the old table, T8, the old tip, the old methodology in earnest, right? We're onto a new thing, we have levels of service at intersections, and then we're adding a VC now. So I guess, Tom, I just want to make sure we're not going to say it's 1.0 under the old way, because I, I'm not exactly sure. It might be, but that was just a different way to measure than we are measuring right now.
Well, let me clarify that. I guess under the old way, we assumed if it was on the tip, and even not, though it wasn't funded, it was passing, allowed to pass concurrency because it was assumed to be done. That's what I meant by the old way.
Yes.
I don't want to mix apples and oranges to say, well, we used to always assume that it was funded if it was on the tip, therefore we could pass concurrency. But now we're saying because it's not funded, we're not going to pass concurrency. I don't think that's apples to apples, and that's unfair.
He's not disagreeing with you, since you can't see the shrug. I think, at least I think that's what that was.
Yeah, I think that's fair, totally.
All right. Thank you.
Councilmember Stewart.
So just wanting to make sure I understand these assumptions. So the first, so kind of adding on to Councilmember Hornish there, if I look at the capacities for the 2016 versus the 2024, like if I look at Issaquapine Lake Road, there's only one corridor that increases its capacity. So segment 31 increases its capacity from 881 to 925. So I still have to go back to the conversation we had at our study session, which is, I just don't trust that these capacities are accurate, that we're going to do an improvement and we're going to add 40 cars in an hour, 45 cars in an hour? That's it? So I have to, I have to wonder, and when I look through the differences between 2016 and 2024, I can only find a handful, and literally when I say handful, I mean five capacities that have increased. And even looking at Issaquafall City Road, right, we only increase the capacity on two of those segments, even though that's a pretty huge project that we're doing. So I really have to wonder how much we're underestimating these capacities when I look at even roads that we are assuming we're doing improvements on. The improvements are marginal at best in terms of how the capacity gets calculated. And I really can't imagine that, I guess, I guess as we go through this, I'd like to understand more how we can say we're going to do some road project that's, you know, $10 million, $20 million, and we're only going to add the ability to move 40 extra cars during peak hour. That seems, I mean, if that's true, then I think we need to reevaluate how we're going to spend that money, because that would be, that would not be a good use of funds, right?
Again, I think this is where we need to question, you know, what is this tool being used for? I don't discount you that these generalized numbers that are in here, that are these the best? Are these what we should be using to fully design our roadways? Absolutely not. And I hope that we haven't misled any member of the council to believe that that's our recommendation here.
Right.
Concurrenty is a yes-no, it's a litmus test to determine, you know, are our roadways generally meeting the level of service standards that we stated within our comprehensive plan? Or do we need to make improvements? And it's a yes-no, it's not a what is that improvement? So I understand and I empathize with the lack of satisfaction here. At the same point, as we're determining what is the best improvement for a roadway like Issaquapine Lake Road, I sincerely hope we're using other, more sophisticated methodologies. At the same time, as the city is being, the city is on a, you know, daily, weekly, I'm not sure the frequency, getting in concurrency applications, they need to have something that's defensible, replicatable, and I'd say adequately conservative to test those applications and be able to quickly answer whether or not we're meeting or failing our level of service standards. This isn't where the story should end.
Right.
It's really just a yes-no, can we move forward or not?
And I guess to that point...
And I guess to that point, though, I'm trying to understand, given the generalized nature and the fact that fairly significant improvements based on this methodology don't yield much difference in the capacity, that there's probably a lot more refining, I think to the city manager's point, there's a lot more refining we probably need to do in terms of how we calculate these capacities that will more, more precisely reflect our roadways before we can put a precise ratio on here to make that yes-no determination. Because that's what, that's what's concerning to me, is we do, you know, a five, a 10, a $20 million project, and we're only going to yield a few car difference because we have this generalized methodology that doesn't really take a lot of things into account. But we're going to, you know, we have to be careful not to put too precise of a, of a ratio on that, given the generalized nature. And is that, am I, am I understanding that correctly?
What I would say is that where we're seeing the hotspots along in, in this table makes sense. They generally fit with, I think, our general impression. Now, you know, we can continue to perfect the tool, but, you know, what I would say is, at this point, are they doing their job in terms of identifying those roadways that have the most issues in Sammamish? Are they identifying that there's a pass or fail? And I would say that it currently is doing that. I empathize with, you know, kind of the concern of, hey, we just put a $20 million improvement or $10 million improvement in here, we're planning to do so. And I'm looking at a 40-car, 40-vehicle-per-hour capacity. Again, I would say that's, you know, that's a one-way directional. So when you kind of think about that over the course of the day, do you remember you've got two ways of traffic?
I get that, but, but the concurrency test we're applying is just the AM and PM peak hours. We're not looking at the whole day. And so that's what concerns me, is that we're, we have the generalized methodology. And I agree that, I think it's great for a, for a heat map kind of exercise, but for that precision of deciding, does this next house trip, trip this or not? I want to make sure that we understand how precise these capacity calculations are so that we don't try to take an imprecise capacity calculation and put a very precise ratio on top of that. Because that violates, you know, I'll quote my son here, that violates the significant digits rules in, in any kind of engineering or math that you do. If one, if your, if your numerator or if your denominator is not very precise, you can't then have a more precise outcome from that.
Well, I'd say whenever you're doing a segment methodology, I think it's, it's going to have that order of magnitude error that your, your son's bringing. I mean, I, I would say that's, that's inherent with the segment methodology. That is why it's also paired with an intersection-based methodology. So again, you know, that's, I would, I would kind of keep both of those in mind, that they're a check against one another.
Thank you.
Councilmember Valderrama.
Yeah, I find it ironic, again, that we're talking about the segments since we began the whole exercise not wanting segment averaging and that, and we're back into the segments. That said, following on what Councilmember Stewart had mentioned, we're now, we've now chosen, in addition to the concurrency model that we had all agreed to in two councils, the level of intersections, level of service at intersections, to want to do some V over C that we now are applying. But as we're seeing in the description that's talking about the 40 vehicles, and we've heard from staff as far as the capacity calculations by using the HCM, the capacity calculations in the HCM methodology may or may not be accurate. They certainly allow turn lanes and medians to affect the capacity, but they do not necessarily, really represent our segments. The letters that we were receiving today from citizens, business, and other groups came back and said the same thing. By the city's own admission, these are unnecessary, potentially erroneous, and-
Point of order.
...oriented out there.
State your point.
Oh, I'm done with that, so he can-
We have decided to apply a V over C. The only discussion tonight is what we're going to apply, come back next week.
The council's given direction that we are doing a V over C.
I said that, but the approach that we're using, and the blunt instrument is where I'm going to, then preludes, because it's such a blunt instrument, and we're seeing how the V over C can be erroneous and inaccurate. We have to be very careful with the numbers that we're going to apply so that we don't inadvertently, as was mentioned here before, the next house start tripping into the concurrency failures. And so those 40 cars are an example of that. It doesn't take into the segments. And as I heard at our last meeting, the traffic engineers, Victor, Kendra, staff, and that saying, is if you're going to use this, use it as a placeholder, because the consequence is you have to use the blunt instrument. And the blunt instrument would be on the backs, if we fail, it would be on the backs of the current citizens, not the developers. And we're supposed to be looking at, how do we do that and hit that sweet spot? So as we look at these, that's exactly what we're taking into account, is this methodology is not the most suited. We need some time to work it out, as was recommended by our engineers, and start to put those "and" statements in that we talked about over a year or two. Thank you.
Okay, I don't have any more lights, so I'll just-
I've got another question, if I could.
Sure.
I'm still, and Councilmember Stewart, thank you for pointing out the improvement of the current on line 31 to year 2024, six years out of 40 cars for line 31. I go back to my original question on my first go-around. What is really assumed in 2024? If, if we have a project that, and I think, Kendra, you said the project on the tip are assumed, is not line 31 on the tip? And if so, what improvement is it? And how did we only improve it by 40 if it was adding a lane?
I would argue, or at least inject, that it's, it's likely because Isaguapine Lake Road only adds 40 cars, because it's a three-lane project, which doesn't really add any capacity to the road. It's curb, gutter, sidewalk, it's our old project, which was based on the methodology in table T8. However, Isaguapine City Road, where we're actually adding real capacity by adding lanes, we get 1,000 cars per hour more. And that is why table T8 became a problem, because it wasn't really adding capacity. And that's probably why you're only seeing 40 cars with it.
So that's line 39 that you're talking about? Yeah?
Yes.
I'm struggling with why 31 is only 40. It sounds like a right turn lane with 5% increment.
That would be my guess, because you've got the, the third lane is a center median. It's not a lane that you would just drive in, you might pull off to turn left.
That is correct, and it's only given a 5% capacity bump because of that.
Okay, that's helpful, thank you.
I don't know if staff wants to go into this anymore, if you just want council to have a conversation here?
Here to, to answer questions, so we don't have any more material.
Okay, Councilmember Stewart.
Yeah, so one of the questions that I had asked about was, I think typically, the V over C uses average daily volumes and not peak hours necessarily. So we are, in this case, we are trying to measure only the peak hours, right? The AM peak and the PM peak. Given that, it, it seems to me that during rush hour, we should not expect our roads to perform at, at optimal, right? So looking at a 1.0 V over C ratio assumes that everyone would be able to travel at speed, because the road is not above capacity, so it would, it would be performing optimally. I think trying to build out our roads to allow everyone to travel at speed during rush hour would mean that we were overbuilding our roads and that we would be over-impacting our environment. I had asked if there was an industry standard when you're looking at only peak hours for what a V over C ratio should be. You know, how much should we be expecting our, our rush hour to be a little bit slower than non-rush hour? Because if we build out to rush hour, that's 10 hours a week, right? Two hours a day, five days a week, for effectively only about nine months out of the year, because we know that our rush hours during the summer months are significantly less than our rush hours during the, the school months. So do we have a sense of what kind of, you know, degradation, if you will, we should have, and how does that translate into a V over C ratio, right? So if I'm thinking about during a non-peak hour, I can travel across town in 20 minutes. You know, if I allow a 15% degradation, then I'm adding three minutes. If I allow a 30% degradation, I'm talking about six minutes. And if the cost differential between three minutes and six minutes is $100 million, I'm not sure that our voters would be willing to pay $100 million to get across town three minutes faster during rush hour. And so that's, to me, that's the decisions that we need to be looking at and understanding, because if we, again, to the city manager's point, we don't want it to be too, too high, but we also don't want it to be too low, because once we create it, once we have those failures, we have to go pay for them. And I want to make sure that we are spending that tax money wisely. So do you have any sense of what kinds of V over C ratios correlate to those types of, of changes in, in expectation on the roads? And I'm going to guess, to some degree, no, before you answer, because to quote you, Councilmember Hornish, I believe you were the one that said that the V over C is not a, a proxy for driver experience. I think that was one of the concerns to begin with, but I could be mistaken.
The only reaction I want to provide is that, that VC ratio that's, that feels right for you as a community, that changes from community to community. So we don't have guidance in terms of, this is the one that's right for Sammamish, because all these other Puget Sound suburbs, for example, do this as well. What I would encourage you to do, which is very similar to how other councils and communities operate, is to look at, what are the capital improvements that are necessitated by each of these? And which level of capital investment feels right to you? So what level, which facilities, obviously, each of these scenarios result in different capital plans that you're going to need to move on in the next six years? So which one, which package of these do you have the appetite for? What, what feels right? Because that, quite frankly, when I've been asked, you know, how to typically, communities set their level of service standards, to be completely candid and honest with you, most cities go through their process, they do their modeling, they figure out their future project list, including public outreach, you know, kind of the whole kit and caboodle that's going to be included as a part of the TMP. And at the end of that process, they say, when we build that future system and we know how much growth that we're expected to accept from the state, what does that mean from a level of service standpoint? And then they set their standard there. So, you know, obviously, in this case, we're, we're moving ahead a little bit, because we want to get this, these VC standards set, at least in the interim, until we have a TMP in place. So I would encourage you to look at, what are the failures that we have on each of these? Which failures do you, as a council, feel ready to fix in the next six years? And select kind of that scenario.
I guess without a TMP, I don't think we should be making too many of those decisions, because we don't know system-wide what the best value, right? Where the, where the dollars spent are going to give us the best increases and the best value to our taxpayers. Is that, is that correct?
Well, I mean, in an ideal world, yes, I would tend to agree with you. However, what I would say is that when we look at these scenarios, generally, the areas where we're seeing failures are areas where the city has already contemplated projects.
Right, but do we know how to solve them, right? That's, you, you asked me, like, what kind of capital project am I okay spending? Well, you know, Sahali, we definitely know we want to address Sahali, but we don't know exactly how. Is it a three lane, is it a five lane, is it a four lane? Is it, is it something else? So I guess that's where, I agree, we need to be making those decisions, but we don't have all the data without the TMP to know what capital project, even in that area that we see as a hotspot, is the right capital project without a completed TMP. Because certainly, the three-lane versus the five-lane option on Sahali, like just using that as an example, that's a huge difference in, in cost.
So that point is very well taken, and it will be, become obvious when we come to you to speak about Isaguapine Lake Road, right? We, we think we have some big recipe in this book. Well, those are, those are assumptions that we put in there, they're, they're close, but they're not, they're not microanalysis. They're not telling you exactly storage lengths, turn pocket lengths, signal timing. You know, this is a planning-level document we're trying to use for design again. We need to come back up a little and, and get out of that, that area, because there's opportunity to design. We are, we're not designing tonight. We, we have to get to a comfort level tonight, right? This is a check-in. I know it's not just a check-in, because it is our guide, but this is not telling us how big of a storage pocket to have a left turn lane on Isaguapine Lake and 32nd. It's not. That's what the, the detailed design does. So the example will be Isaguapine Lake, you know, it says three lanes, signals, very high-level stuff. Okay, great. We're going to come back and, and talk about what that really means in storage pockets, turn pockets, do we have drop lanes, do we not? Do we change around about to an intersection? Signalized for capacity, there's, there's many other elements, which is the caution discussion we had on Friday with, putting ourselves in this box does limit our opportunities. And we did plead in the memo and the agenda bill, like, we really should consider ITS, right? So I think that was in there, 5% add, it helps. And it is a technology that is proven to give capacity on some of these tighter corridors that are all blocked up with intersections and, and traffic, traffic-controlled intersections with signals. So there are other things out there. So that is the limitation of this. I know T8 was what it was, whether it went too far, whatever, it, it's gone. So we're trying to establish something new here. And this isn't perfect either, right? Directional flows on the parkway, we're using a, what's the factor we're using, Kendra? Is it a .55? They're doing math over there. The camera is .55 was the base, or .6? But the model itself is going to measure the actual northbound flow, southbound flow, and come up with .7. And it's, it's doing its own math, not that that matters for concurrency, but there are other ways to, to show capacity, which is why 228th, you know, it effectively operates 50/50. It's fairly high and it has a decent capacity. So it's, it's not perfect, it is a guide. One other question, there was an answer, what is in the 2024? Only items that are on our tip and funded for us to put into the model? And then what is permitted and given a concurrency cert between last time we snapshotted, which was, you know, 2016 through 2024? We don't add extras in it. We do in our 2035 model, right? That has other assumptions for growth, but the, the base six-year does not. I want to make sure we can answer that question before we leave.
Thank you.
I may have made that worse than better, but I had to add a little bit.
I'm going to go with people that haven't spoken yet. Deputy Mayor Moran, have you spoken yet? You have not, okay, go ahead.
Well, I just wanted to make a couple of comments. And one of them is, I am not of the belief that the TMP should be setting what our project should be. I am of the belief that the level of service should be setting what our project should be. So I, I am a firm believer that doing the TMP and using the TMP in that way is just backwards. So, but that's just, you know, I know we are kind of probably going to be split on that, but that's my opinion. And the second thing is, you know, we keep coming up back to the argument of the V over C, and I'm really done hearing about that argument. Because we are back to this only because of all the changes that were made to the intersections. And all those changes made the intersection level of service inaccurate to enough of us that the majority ruled that we would have the V over C. So that's just a done deal, so we need to not have that argument anymore either. So going to the 2024 numbers, so Met Market is in there, correct? With the Sky Apartments?
Everything that is permitted is in there.
Okay, so that would be in there, but, for example, nothing else in that Town Center is in?
ET Joe and, yeah.
Everything that's built and has been issued a concurrency certificate is in the model, 2024.
Okay, Councilmember Ritchie.
Okay. I want to thank Cheryl and Kendra and Victor. Where's Victor? There he is, hey Victor.
He's in the corner.
And Steve and the- And Steve and the rest of the staff for all the work that you guys have put into this and sitting with us. Thank you. It's very important that we try to communicate with you guys and you guys give us feedback, and I'm very grateful for that. So I just want to start with that because this is hand in glove. We work together and I'm grateful, and I hope we all are too. I would like to use the word that we've kind of been bouncing around here in these conversations and kind of running by, that this is supposed to be an interim solution. And while I respect with, that I've heard that this is, that, you know, the, the TMP shouldn't inform and the, the, the level of service should, I look at it the other way, with all due respect. You know, I, I think that we should try to figure out something to replace T8 that will essentially allow us to get through the next step. I thought that's what we were doing back in March, when we kind of figured all this out, what we were going to do first, concurrency or the TMP. So what I think we're doing here is we're kind of, we're really down in the weeds here on something that we really are trying to get answers for, that the TMP and the process, not just the, the final TMP itself, but the, the project, that the process will inform us more and give us answers and give us data and give us possible solutions that will help us to formulate a better concurrency model down the road. More data is better data. And I hear, you know, what's the 2035 numbers? What's the 2024 numbers? What's funded? What isn't funded? I think a lot of that, most of it, some of it, would be part of the development of a transportation master plan. I thought that's what we were trying to get to. Now, I myself do not support the V over C, however, that's what the council decided. So I think it makes sense, at least at this point, to set a V over C number that is, say, 1.5 with the 25, at the corridors, across the city, with a 25% overage at the segments, and then put a sunset on it. And the sunset is one year from today, for example. And at that point, we could go back and we could look at what we were able to learn from the TMP, and I'm assuming we'll have the TMP done by then if we can get this concurrency thing behind us. Wouldn't that be great? So I, I'm just trying to move the ball forward here. How do we not impose a huge tax burden on our taxpayers? And how do we set a V over C ratio out there that is, as Kendra said, conservative yet, is reliable? You threw a whole bunch of adjectives out there that I love and they were all gone now. So conservative, testable, reliable, all that. So I don't know that the number matters as much as we set something out there that doesn't impose a huge burden on our taxpayers. And this is the last thing I want to say. My big concern here is that we're supposed to be working as, I, I think, this is, again, my perception, that we, we are all, as a council, supposed to be working with the community, with our development partners to, to recognize that we live in a region, that we're not just an island floating out in space by ourselves. All of our roads connect to other cities and other jurisdictions. So we have to be cognizant of that. And what's important to me is that we recognize that, at the end of the day, this is a process that's never-ending, right? We're going to be talking about traffic and development and roads and, for a long time. So there is no one right answer, right? We're trying to figure out what the right fit is for now. We're going to set that up. We're going to plug all in those numbers. We're going to have some, some development get started. We're going to see if it works. And if it doesn't work, we're going to revisit it. And if it does work, we're going to revisit it anyway, right? So I would hope that we can kind of rally around the idea that this is an interim plan and that we can set something now. It's not set in stone. What's set in stone is that we're working together to try to find the best solution, and we need more data. We need more information, and we need to be more fully informed. And that's why I suggest a 1.5 for now, 25% overage segments, a one-year sunset. Let's get on to the TMP, and let's see how these numbers plug into real life. Thank you.
Councilmember Ross.
Thank you. Talking about what we're here for, it's, it's a litmus test. I heard Kendra mention that. It's the gate to whether or not new development and infrastructure can be produced to support it based on the, and using V over C as a measure to measure what that measure, that litmus test is. We don't want to create a moratorium under a different name, nor do we want to open the floodgates with too high of a V over C that will not allow our city to keep up, our infrastructure to keep up with that growth. So we really have to find the litmus test that regulates the new influxes of development into our community and match it up to its impact on infrastructure and see if we can keep up with it. That's what it's all about. And so with that said, we, the risk to citizens is too high to have a, a V over C too, too high. And so I'm concerned, and then we have the flexibility, given that we've plugged this into the comp plan, we can, we have flexibility to adjust and modify periodically throughout the year if we so desire. We can incorporate, I recommend that we incorporate some of the ads that we've been talking about methodically over the next several months, such as ITS, flashing yellow arrows, right turn lanes, left turn lanes, mediums, medians, and so on. We can do that over time, and that will further increase the capacities or motorized T8, for lack of a better term. As far as the burn on taxpayers, as long as they're not failing today in the measurement, it's not a burden on the taxpayer. It would have to be triggered by new development. Now, there is some intersections or corridors that look like they're going to fail under all scenarios. Let's not be overly fixated on a uniform high or uniform low V over C. We can have a standard VOC. I encourage a lower range. I'll say it, 1.1 and, or under. And I look at some of the corridors that fail, have the flexibility, consider a hybrid, maybe assign a higher VOC for select quarters. And back to Councilmember Stewart's point, if we're not buying significantly greater capacity on it with some of those add-ons, let's make the VOC higher. It, it, we, we can be flexible, get home, and come up with a solution that we can move on with. But in sum, let's, we just have to focus on what's best for measuring what triggers development. What are, are we going to be able to sustain the growth with our infrastructure and keep up with that? That's the bottom line. That's what it's all about.
Councilmember Valderrama.
Put me in the queue if you could, Kristi.
Pardon?
Put me in the queue.
Yep.
Okay. So I agree with the last two statements, although the, the problem I have is that, in effect, we're trying to be the transportation engineers and come up with these numbers with incomplete data. And it's not arguing on the TMP that was decided in February or March, whether we agree that was right or, or not, that's different. We are where we are. It is what it is, as they say in the Midwest. That said, we, we talk a lot about these ANDs and lights and the AND statements, and on the record, it was called T8R. So creating this new T8R, but that said, that's going to take some time to do. In the meantime, we have this HCM model that's a very blunt instrument, and there's a real danger, if you don't set it high enough, you're going to put tremendous burdens on our citizens. We have yet to figure out on the level of service intersection, when we went to 43, all of those, we have the short-term ones and the tip. That was our vision when we were together saying, hey, here's the tip on that part. When we, level of services, we put the tip into that. As we start to put the V over C, and we've already talked about the problems with capacity, we need to ensure that it is not too low or too high. We have from staff that you put 1.0, you do fail. We have public records that are sent to us that say 1.25 would trigger a de facto moratorium. So I'd like to find out, because I'm not the transportation engineer, you know, I just got back from LA, I had to and from, I took thermal fluids. I'm not a pilot. I understand the basic concept, but that's what I feel like we're doing. We're now all transportation engineers going through. So I'd like to ask Victor a couple of questions, if it's a, if you don't mind asking. So we saw the, the public comments of, of 1.25, and you were kind enough to respond to an email and that council has on it, talking about 1.25, 1.56. And I think everybody's in agreement and has said that East Lakes-Sammamish Parkway would be excluded. But you put that Sahale Way, Isicua Pine Lake Roads, within six years would require additional funding. Is that correct?
Right, from some level of improvement.
Which in effect would have to then start under the six-year plans appearing on our tip, which would in fact, in my mindset, you're going to our citizens because those are existing deficiencies that would be, have to be funded by the current citizens.
Yeah, I guess an important reminder is even, even if you have an existing deficiency, if you're, if you're just 1% over.
Exactly.
That next project, existing citizens don't have to pay for the other 99. The growth that uses the rest of the capacity you build, you could charge development for. So it's just that residual over.
That's right, which in this case would be a significant coming in, and then the residuals would be coming across. So given that's the problem with 125 and the other public records that came to us that say that is a de facto moratorium, it's not 1, it's not 1.25. We're looking at a higher number to be able to play with, to give us that buffer while we develop those AND statements, the T8R, as stated. Is that correct? As that placeholder, as you once said?
Sure, yeah. So again, and maybe to help in context, because there was, I also heard some questions about, you know, that blunt instrument versus what you're counting and what, you know, maybe what's another, a way to come up with that factor is, well, what, what's the most traffic you see moving in a single lane anywhere in Sammamish? And it's roughly 1,250. There's, I'd looked through the councils, not many places where we have a single lane of traffic with more than that. That's East Lakes-Sammamish Parkway, either northbound or southbound. That equates to about a, a 1.4 V over C ratio. And so that, and then you can gauge that, right? If you know, you know what southbound East Lakes-Sammamish Parkway feels like at 5:00 PM, 5:30, I know what it feels like. That's 1.4 using, using the capacities you have in the table.
Oh, thank you. So then, going back to Councilmember Ritchie's comment, a 1.4, 25% up would hold us for a while. And while we start to do and work through the AND tables, the T8R, and getting that in, and I like the idea of doing a one-year sunset on it to come back and visit, if we start with 1.4 above or above, and then we can work in. Thank you.
Councilmember Hornish.
Okay. I've got about 10 points to make after all that. Number one, HCM 1.0 V over C ratio is not optimal. It's not at speed limit. It's at what the engineers have designated to kind of say, this is what we can accept as to the pain level, for lack of better words. Number two, a comment was said that I said V over C is not the driver's experience. It doesn't measure driver's experience. When we had T8 in there, that was the comment. It sure doesn't and did not measure driver experience. I think if it's something close and reasonable with a reasonable V over C ratio, something close to the HCM recommended of 1.0, that, that is somewhat of a proxy, not a good one, but it's somewhat of a proxy for driver's experience. Number three, somebody said, once we have a failure, we have to go pay for that. That is not correct. Once there is a failure because of new development, if we can pay for it, we would pay for it. And if we can do it within six years, we will help. But if we can't do it under the GMA, the developer can then say, I still want to build. I will fix it. I will mitigate and pay for it. That's very different than our citizens paying for it that's being bantered around here tonight. Number four, the whole concept that you should look at what's going to be failing and figure out what capital you have, it is somewhat of a factor, but it's the tail wagging the dog, I think, as Councilmember Moran alluded to and, and a couple others. The, the level of service is the key. We shouldn't even be worrying about whether or not we have the capital. The GMA says, we get to set the level of service, and if we can fund the improvement within six years, then can, development can continue. But if we can't fund it, we can't allow continued development because we can't keep up with the infrastructure unless the developer wants to pay for it. The number, I don't know what number I'm on, five. Replacing the T8 was not, it was not, it was, the concept was to make sure that we don't have a, an LOS that never fails. There's a concept out there under the Growth Management Hearing Board that says, at some point, it's intended to make sure that you deny development if you have the proper LOS. So getting rid of T8 was to make sure that we don't always pass, as that seemed to indicate. I think it really, oh, another point that I'm a little, still a little fuzzy on and concerned about is I, I believe that with our failures that we're showing at the lower V over C ratios, we're using, and I made this point earlier, but it really boils down to whether or not it's really failing, is we're not including the Sahale improvements that have been always included to approve all the concurrency applications for the last 12 years, or the last six years, probably. So to now say we're not going to include it to show it that it, that it's failing if we don't, if we don't have it funded, that is apples to oranges. So I think you have to take into account that if you were to improve Sahale, as we have always assumed that we would on the tip, when we approved prior concurrency, then you wouldn't have the failures in 2024 with the lower ratios either. The real question that this whole thing comes down to is who's going to pay for the improvement? As long as there's no current failure, or there's no current failure that we're adding to what we had previously from the old T8, i.e. Isicua Pond Lake, Pine Lake, Sahale, and we are exempting the parkway now, I'll acknowledge that. And, and we're doing Isicua Falls City, even though it's not on the tip, if I remember right. Those are the three things that we have in plan, and those are the three things that are showing failures even with a 1.0 V over C. So I don't know, some of the comments aren't make computing for me as to why we need to go up to a 1.5 when a 1.0 is sufficient to have no current failures. If we take into account what's been on the tip and what's on the tip, assuming it's fully funded, like we've always have in the past, then there are no failures at 1, no current failures at 1.0. Now, if a developer wants to come in and they add so much traffic that we now go over a, a V over C of 1.0, and, and they, they could also have the same issue if they increase the V over C at the intersection, and we can't pay for it, we can't fix it, then the developer has to pay for it if they want to do the development, or we have to say no, and the concurrency fails under the GMA. Last point, I'm a little concerned to even say that we want to use a 1.4 V over C ratio from the East Lakes-Sammamish Parkway that we've decided to exempt because it's so hurtful. It's so painful for our citizens that we're going to use that as a standard? That really doesn't make sense to me either. So I think it needs to be something lower versus higher. And I think it really boils down to, as a mind-numbingly stupid council member, it boils down to, do you want to allow the developers to continue developing at all costs? Or do you want to have a level of service and a quality of life for citizens that's reasonable at the lower end of a V over C ratio? I'm done.
Okay. I'm going to make a couple of comments here before we go back through with the lights again. And I have notes scattered absolutely everywhere at this point. Staff had made the point of making, giving some considerations for ITS and flashing yellow allowances. And I think that's certainly something that's worthy of, of a look because I recognize that ITS and flashing yellows do add capacity to our roadways. I want to point out that these are interim development regulations, which means they can be changed if needed, even though it may not be easy. But it still has to go through the same process that the interim development regulations that we just passed by emergency ordinance on setbacks and the like will go through the, the Planning Commission, and they will come back to us. And as, there, there was a comment brought up about Sahale and three versus five lanes. If you go back and look at our previous comp plan, it shows you exactly what happens with both of those scenarios. So that information is all there for us in 2035. One thing that I noted today while looking at that, however, is that, and I could not figure out why, and I'm not even sure it's relevant to this, but there are less cars on our roadway in total with three lanes over five lanes. Could not figure out why. That did not make a whole lot of sense. So I think, for me, what, what we're looking at here as far as V over C, and I'm, I'm a little troubled that, you know, we have this green and red, and we're making decisions by whether it's passing or failing. I think there has to be a recognition of existing conditions out on our roadways today, and we're talking about existing deficiencies. and we're talking about existing deficiencies. Well, they are existing deficiencies. Issaquapine Lake Road has been sitting on our TIP for 12 years, funded, unfunded. We've never done the project. And now we're, I think Councilmember Hornish has made the point that we were counting it towards concurrency, and now that it's not funded, we're not going to count it anymore because, you know, it feels like it makes it harder, I think, to have a 1.0 or 1.1 for a V/over-C ratio. But I don't want to avoid the problems that exist on our roadways any longer, and that's what this is about for me. A 1.5 V/over-C is way too high, in my opinion. That allows far more development to come in, more cars on our roads, and you are turning a blind eye to the existing problems that are out there where citizens have said for years that we have congestion problems all over this city. And to not recognize them and to pile on is disregarding what they're telling us. So Issaquapine Lake Road and Sahali are problematic per our little note here that we have with the agenda bill because they don't have funding attached to them. I would argue we ought to have funding attached to them if we're going to do them. And if we can't afford to do them, I think Councilmember Hornish just outlined basically what the, what the options are. Dothee Hill is also listed on here, a corridor that fails, says northbound, eastbound direction in the PMP gower under Test 1 in 2024, but it's not failing now. It's also not on our tip. But I would point out that raising the V/over-C ratio would allow for more cars to drive on that road. And a decade ago, when this city adopted the Town Center Plan, that road was identified as one that was going to need mitigation in direct impact from the Town Center. But it's not on our, on our tip now, and it's not failing now. And 10 years ago, they recognized that it would fail because of development, future development, and Town Center was identified. So it's in there. In fact, it's, I think I cut and pasted some of the information out of here. In 2016, the average weekly daily traffic out there on Dothee Hill was 14,220. And then the threshold, the old threshold under Table T8, 16,790. By 2035, we anticipated 19,550 cars to be out there. But that is again with the Town Center. So sometime before 2035, probably well before 2035, if you consider, that's a 37% increase, that failure is triggered, right? But we don't have that, that's why I was asking for the 2024 number earlier today, Steve, is I was looking to find out, well, you know, we're not looking at average weekly daily traffic anymore, but I was trying to get an apples-to-apples comparison on Dothee Hill. So anyway, but I, again, I don't want to avoid existing issues out on the road, and I am most certainly supportive of adopting a V/over-C that is lower and recognizes what is going on on our, on our roads right now. These are tough political decisions to make because they're uncomfortable, and we are talking about a lot of money in order to complete projects, but I am, I'm not supportive of not recognizing what's actually going out on our, on our roads so that we can actually exacerbate the problem. Great. Councilmember Valderrama.
I'm concerned of exasperating the bill unnecessarily to our citizens without providing solutions onto, we've already spent the true cost of this exercise that we're going through are millions, a year of delay. But that said and done, that's what we chose to do. I remind you, and the attorney had answered the question, we had gotten the statement that you can't use concurrency to stop growth. That's inherently against the Growth Management Act. So we've had that in public comments, we've had the statements from MRSC to that effect. By setting the numbers low and creating the de facto moratorium, we're going to be going against that. Additionally, as I was going through, I did find the comment from MRSC, and they stated, from a legal standpoint, I would be concerned that a situation where a city was not taking active steps to alleviate their level of service deficiencies. If the existence of level of service deficiencies became a basis for denying development applications, it would likely lead to legal claims against the city that it was not meeting its needs under the GMA, which is what we would in effect be doing in this, and this is what was being cited here. We go low, 1.25 or below 1 point is already being called a de facto moratorium. Now, Councilmember Hornish had also talked about the financing that takes place. Again, in public comment, we had also the comments stated from MRSC and a legal opinion given, which just because Councilmember Hornish had raised, it's in an era of ever tightening public budgets and voter resistance to tax proposals, the actual occurrence of funding shortfalls for public facility improvements becomes a very realistic scenario. If probable funding for programmed improvements failed to materialize, whether through failure of grant funding or voter disapproval or otherwise, the responsible jurisdiction must raise additional funds, reassess its land use assumptions, or reduce the facility level of service. All of these options comply with GMA requirements. So I, I think by trying to say it too low, and oh, the next one trips it and he has to pay for all of it, I think you're going to end up with suits coming at us very clearly and in contravening with the GMA here. So I'd like to hear from another land use attorney otherwise, but up to date, this is, seems to be a consistent message that's been going on. We have heard, and we've been told by our city, by our consultants, by Victor and the other, we need a placeholder out there to start while we work with the T, to create that T8R table of the ANDs. So let's pick a number. He had given us, and I agree, I think that's 1.4, 25%. I like Jason's comment, do it for a year while we put the ANDs revisited. I mean, that's what all the professionals are telling us. Why are we putting our head in the asphalt and trying to be transportation engineers? Thank you.
Councilmember Stewart.
Yeah, so I just, I, I think, again, let's not, let's not paint this as a for or against people or developers. I think what we all are looking for right now is a balance, right? We want to find the appropriate V/over-C ratios that will ensure that we are not choking off all development, no matter what, but also that we're not allowing all development at all costs. And I don't think anybody up here is saying we're going to set a V/over-C ratio that's just going to allow all development at all costs. So I don't think we should be speaking in hyperbole. Let's stay focused on the task at hand, which is striking the appropriate balance. I'd like to ask if we can, Victor, I'm sorry, I'm going to put you on the spot again, but could you actually define for us what a V/over-C of 1 actually means, since you are the traffic engineer, and we'll, we'll all listen to what you say?
Yeah, just one of the traffic engineers. So, so again, yeah, V/over-C of 1, that, that capacity does try to get at some level of driver experience. So I think a couple of meetings ago, I mentioned that the actual free-flow capacity of a single unimpeded lane is 1,700 to 2,200 vehicles an hour, depending on how close the drivers want to drive together. So when the HCM methodology is saying the capacity of a single lane is 880, like you're seeing in the table, that extra 40 trips, that was the effect of the two-way left turn lane, that's your 5% bump. But so when HCM says the capacity is 880, it is allowing for the fact that there will be left turns onto and off of that lane. So you can't have the full 1,700, 1,800 cars an hour because that's free flowing with two seconds between cars. So that 880 is trying to capture some level of driver expectancy. There's a factor, I know you guys like all the formulas in your memos, that the C we're using is, is a derivative of the ADT, so the kind of maximum ADT of a roadway, what's called the K factor, how much of that ADT occurs in the PMP or the peak hour, whether it's AM or PM. And then another factor called D, the directional factor, how, what's the difference in percentage between the two directions of traffic? Because a road with 50-50 distribution, each direction has a lower capacity than if it's very skewed. So that's, kind of helps answer your question about how do we count 1,200 on Eastlake-Sammamish Parkway or Sahali? I'll stop saying Eastlake-Sammamish. Sahali Way has about 1,200 in a single lane, northbound AM. Well, it can do that because southbound AM is fairly low. There are very few left turns being made onto or off of northbound Sahali Way. Everyone's just going. And so that's why it achieves a capacity higher than that 880 or 900 because that's assuming a lot more sort of friction. So the formula being used now, the D is set at 0.55 for both directions. You actually have the counts that demonstrate that for some roads, it's 0.75 one-way, 0.25 for the AM, and then they flip during the PM on the commute routes. So the capacity does try to account for that driver experience, and it has actually, you know, almost cut the capacity of the lane in half.
So, thank you for that. But then, given that definition of capacity, if we were to assign a V/over-C of 1, what does that imply for that driver experience? Does that imply, so as I understood it from our study session, that when you have the V/over-C over 1, that your, your lane is, is not having any degradation in the expected flow?
No, a V/over-C of 1 is a significant amount of degradation. So a V/over-C of 0.3 is where you probably wouldn't notice degradation.
Okay.
A V/over-C of 1, you're getting down to about probably 30% of the free-flow speed. So, you know, V/over-C of 0.1, 0.2 of the speed limit, if the free-flow speed is 40, nothing's in my way, then you're going 38. So, so again, some of the speed data we saw, Sahali Way, Eastlake-Sammamish Parkway, they're going about 12 to 15 miles an hour during those peaks. So that V/over-C of 1 is about a 50% or more reduction in speed.
Given that, though, so now I'm going to come back to the math that I went through at the study session. So if you're saying that a V/over-C over 1 means I'm going 15 miles an hour, then when I have this V/over-C of 1.24, assuming that the capacity is calculated correctly, then I'm almost not moving at all. But if I'm not moving at all, there's no way that I could get 1,200 cars through that segment in an hour. So something in that math is not correct. And since the 1,200 cars or the 1,178 cars that we counted are the actual counts, then that's telling me that the capacity is significantly underestimated because we know that if the cars were stopped, then there wouldn't be 1,200 cars going through, you know, I mean, some of these segments are what, half a mile at most? So if I'm getting, if I'm getting 1,200 cars through a half a mile segment in an hour, then they're going faster than 1 mile an hour.
Right. So the, that is because that D, that directional factor in the current formula is set at 0.55 for every direction, every lane. So for instance, Eastlake-Sammamish Parkway or Sahali Way.
Sahali, yep.
Let's say Sahali where you have 1,200 going in one way.
Yep.
It's because the capacity is about 1,200 because if D becomes 0.75 in one direction and 0.25 in the other, instead of assumed to be 0.55 each direction, then one direction has a capacity of 1,200, the other direction has a capacity of about 400. And if the volumes match those two, then the roadway operates like what you're observing.
Okay, so I'm sorry, I gotta, I gotta go slower than you. I'm trying to keep up. So what, what I think I heard you just say is that while right here, it's saying that the capacity is 951, you're saying the capacity's probably more like 1,200 for that particular direction.
Right, because the directional split during the peak, when you see a high volume one direction and a low volume the other direction, you actually have a higher capacity in that higher volume direction because there's less oncoming friction.
Got it.
In the other traffic.
So given that, right, and again, given that, you know, we already know that the HCM model has some limitations, and we need to refine those over time. For like a Sahali Way, what would you recommend we set a V/over-C to account for the fact that we are underestimating the capacity? Because again, I'm not trying, I just want to be clear, I'm not trying to set it so high that all development for all of eternity can happen, no matter what, but I'm trying to make sure that we set it at an appropriate value. So if we, if we actually think the capacity's 1,200, but we're, we're doing a calculation based on 951, that's a pretty big fudge factor. That's like a, that's like a 25% off on the denominator, which is going to have a huge multiplying effect on my ratio.
Right. So the, basically that whole table of, table of numbers gives you a reference point. So where you're, if you see a 1.2, and then you think about that segment during that peak, and that feels okay, that's bad enough, then that might be the, that's the V/over-C that accounts for that kind of blunt tool of having a 0.55 directional factor everywhere. So you could look at your table and determine, you know, which of these V/over-C ratios feels okay to me? Go right to that driver experience, don't look at the numbers, but for, you know, and I think what you said is northbound Sahali Way at, you know, 8:00 AM is, is not pleasant or not really what you want. So that's near your capacity limit, which is in that 1.2, 1.3 ratio. So if you want to allow a little more development, you need to go a little higher than that. And you need to recognize that your improvements, other than adding a new lane, are in the, you know, 5% for a two-way left turn lane, or 5% for no left turns, or maybe we're going to give 5 or 10% for ITS. So before you, when you're adding capacity, you have sort of limited blocks of capacity to add. So based on the numbers in your table, you know, that 1.3, 1.4, although it sounds like a lot, is not much more traffic than what you see on the busiest roadways you have now. It'd be a little more.
Great. Thank you for that. So in terms of the HCM plus modeling, if I recall correctly, it, it is allowing for just medians and left and right turn lanes. So it's not accounting yet for the ITS, the flashing yellow, and it doesn't have any factor for how long those turn pockets are. It's just a flat 5% if there is or isn't one. And so the, the improvements that we make on some of these roadways where we're expanding, extending the turn pockets, so we're going to make an improvement, but it's not going to add any capacity in our modeling. Is that correct?
Not in this model.
Not in this model, okay. And so, two, two points. One, Mayor, I wanted to answer one of the questions you asked was how could the, the three-lane model have less traffic than the five-lane model? And Victor, correct me here if I'm wrong, but when you do your traffic modeling, you have to think of traffic like water flowing down a hill. If you have a roadway that's going to be a little bit more blocked, then people will find another way, just like the water will. So on a three-lane roadway that isn't going to perform as well, then cars will divert and find a different way. And so...
I think you misunderstood what I said.
Okay.
I did total cars everywhere and every road in the city. There's fewer with...
And then just the last point I wanted to make was that I would agree that the, the combination of a number of tools, one of which is when we see failures in our concurrency, that will tell us where we need to make improvements. And I think Deputy Mayor Moran, what I was trying to say is that the TMP will inform us what those improvements should be, right? So the, you're right, the, when we fail in terms of LOS, that tells us that spot needs an improvement. But exactly how we go about improving that and what size improvement, again, these types of modeling won't tell us that level of detail. That's where the TMP would give us the additional level of detail because this is only, just like Table T8 over gave us, you know, said, oh, go build a bike lane and everything's fine. This, again, doesn't give us credit for a lot of the types of improvements we may make because it has limitations on how it models, which is fine. It's, it's going to be what it is. We just need to use something like the TMP to look at the entire system because, again, if we improve this road over here, like let's pretend for a moment we could make Eastlake-Sammamish Parkway larger, then that would affect how much we improve or what size we improve Sahali. It doesn't mean that we don't still see a failure and say we need an improvement, but we wouldn't necessarily need as many lanes if there's an alternative as well. And that's why I, I feel like the TMP is important because it can give us a whole system set of improvements that we can make, and they all will have an effect on each other. And eventually, we'll see that in the modeling, but the, the details, we again look to our traffic engineers to make those recommendations, not just a, a computer model, because Victor's smarter than the computer model. So thank you, Victor. So, so I think what I heard you say, just to come back to Sahali, was that we do still have some capacities that are a little bit underestimated. We can, we can account for that by making a slightly higher ratio there for that particular one. I think that speaks to what the city manager started with, which is there may be certain areas, certain corridors that we want to set at different numbers than the others because we know that there are some tweaks that we still need to make to the modeling. So tonight, we could decide to make that a little bit higher, and then as we tweak it, we can ratchet that down as we think that our capacity calculations become more accurate. Is that, would that be a fair assessment?
Correct, yep.
Thank you.
Councilmember Ritchie.
Okay, so I have two questions. Can you hang on a sec? I'm going to say, I have two questions, can I, question for Victor, but I want to say something first, okay?
So simultaneously?
Real quick, because I know we're going around second time. I really hope you don't go a third time, but that's cool. I mean, I'm just wanting...
Too late.
Too late? Well, I've only spoken once, so I'm just going to try and do my second now. All right. So when a council member says, if we can fund it, right? So I'm not sure what that means because I think we clearly can fund anything we want to do in this city. We have a $200 million buy-in-o budget. We have 10 banked 1% sitting there. We have all kinds of tax capacity we could go after. We have a large bond capacity we could go after. We can pay for all the road failures that we can find and then some. There's nothing we can't do. There's nothing we can't afford to do if we choose to do that. I think the question that I go back to, that the perspective I have, and with all due respect to other people that have other perspectives, I'm speaking for myself here, the question that I come back to is, are we going to put that on the taxpayers themselves solely? Are we only going to put those failures that come up, whether they're from a large developer, from a small developer, from a mom and pop, whatever it is, are we going to put that on the backs of taxpayers and the city government exclusively? And what I've tried to communicate, and I think is important, is that we have a group of people here with the development community that are interested in working with us to find a way to manage development and find housing choices in our city. I want to try to create a situation here where we have a V over C that trips and causes them to want to work with us, but is not so aggressive or harsh that they choose to just walk away. And then the taxpayers, to the mayor's point, we have existing road problems. We can determine if it's a failure or a not, depending upon what LOS we put on it or what ratio we put on it. But I don't, just from a driver experience standpoint, we need to invest into our roads. I just don't see why, I don't know anyone that can call themselves a fiscal conservative and look at our bank capacity and say, let's go for it. I want to create partnerships with people to try to defray some of those costs or to share in those costs with other organizations that want to invest into our city. We could talk about PSRC, GMA, we could talk about how much is coming down the pike till we're blue in the face. But for the purposes of what we're trying to do right now, we're trying to create, I think, we're trying to create partnerships. We're trying to share in costs, and we're trying to create a situation where we are working with people, not pushing them away and possibly litigation. That's the balance I'm trying to strike in finding a number, an interim number, that we can work with right now. So, in that regard, Kendra, if at all possible, I'd like to ask you, put you in the hot seat and ask you a question.
Can I get a motion to extend first before the question comes?
Moved to extend to 11 o'clock.
It's been moved and seconded. All those in favor of extending to 11 o'clock, say aye.
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 Opposed?
Aye.
I think that's nay. Okay, by vote of 5-2, we extend till 11:00 PM. Okay. Councilmember Ritchie, go ahead.
Thank you. Kendra, in your professional experience, can you please tell me and the rest of the council and the rest of the audience and staff what you believe to be a reasonable V over C ratio at this point for this interim concurrency model, please?
And again, I'm tying it to capital improvements here, and so, take this as a sole opinion. In listening to the council, the highest scenario, the 1.25 and the 1.56, I'm hearing concerns about that level of congestion, and so, I'm, you know, appreciating those concerns. I probably wouldn't recommend going there for all facilities throughout the city. Looking at kind of that middling scenario, that's the 1.1 and the 1.38, it seems like the failures that we're seeing there along East Lakes Mamish Parkway, which council has talked about exempting, and then the additional failures, there is one along Sahali Way that potentially could be remedied through ITS or other types of improvements that council has expressed openness to. The other failure that we've got there is on Isquaw Falls City Road today, which will be addressed through your TIP project. So, I kind of feel like as I'm looking through the data, that it's probably that middling scenario with some sort of, with an exemption for East Lakes Mamish Parkway and potentially a recognition of the performance of ITS and other improved, other kind of maybe non, kind of traditional capital improvements along Sahali. The only other failure I would note under that scenario is the Isquaw Pine Lake Road corridor. The Phase 1 improvement that's currently funded within your six-year TIP does still leave a failure, and that's on Isquaw Pine Lake Road between Clehany and Southeast 46th Street. What I would say is that when we look at the full improvement, the Phase 2 of that, it does address that failure. So, I kind of feel like that middling scenario with some special treatment for just a few of your quarters may be the most prudent, again, listening to what I've heard from council. But again, I'm not speaking on behalf of staff. This is really just...
That's, I mean, and I guess more than listening to us, I guess more what I was looking for is, what does your gut tell you based upon your professional experiences to where we should be? I mean, we're not traffic engineers, so I'm trying to get your, I mean, I could sit here and tell you what we're thinking too, but what do you think?
Well, again, I go down to the capital improvement projects, and I feel like the capital projects that are, that would be required under that middle scenario are pretty doable for the city.
Okay. Victor, same question, if you don't mind. If you're comfortable, I don't want to put you in the spot if it's going to make...
I think he answered it before.
Well, no, you know.
No, no, no problem. So, I'm kind of in the same situation, that middle one, and I would actually say maybe a 1.1 for the corridor and up to 1.4 for a segment. And where the 1.4 is coming is roughly that 1,200 vehicles an hour sort of saturation flow that we're observing. So, you have a corridor, you would allow one segment out of the 3 or 4 to get as bad as you have it on Sahali Way or East Lakes Mamish Parkway. So, for Sahali Way, it would likely be, if you improved a segment, then you would get a lot of benefit from the improvement, especially if you started from the south end and it was a five-lane expansion. So, then it'll get you back down below that 1.1 probably fairly quickly with something you want to do anyway.
Right.
And then I would tie to that, the big decision about what you put in the TIP as applying for concurrency. You know, if you're going to rely on a project, be certain that it is either funded or, as GMA calls it, you have that financial strategy in place. So, you may not have every dollar, but you're pretty darn sure that that second phase of Isquaw Pine Lake can be funded within 6 years so that you can get it started and meet concurrency.
Okay. Thank you. I appreciate that.
Put me in the queue, Kristi.
Um, Councilmember Valderrama, is this round 3? I'm just trying to make sure we go... Okay, Council, Deputy Mayor Moran then.
Victor, there's questions for you.
You're getting your steps in.
So, with the numbers that you just gave, would you use the same numbers without having the counts for the 2035 numbers? Would you, without having the numbers looking further out, which I know you don't like to have any, any more than I don't like to have, but without having those numbers, would you still use those, the same V over Cs?
Yeah, as you're using them as an interim number, you know, that's reducing your risk because you're either going to find out with the first big concurrency certificate request how well it's working, or hopefully you'll sooner than later run those 2035 numbers and test it against those with whatever future projects you want. And then you can determine, do you want this V over C ratio that you just picked to drive the future capital projects, or do you want the capital projects that maybe your public involvement program has identified to drive the level of service standard? That's 2 legitimate ways to develop a capital program. So, if you were going to say, yeah, this is going to be it for till 2035, I'd say probably want to wait, but if it's a 1-year type thing, and I'm confident you're going to find out very soon, because once a few concurrency certificate requests come in and you rerun the current model, you'll see the newest pipeline and see how those numbers are changing.
Thank you.
Councilmember Valderrama.
Okay, given what we heard, I'd like to make a motion that we adopt a V over C of 1.4 plus 25%, not including East Lakes Mamish Parkway. Have a 1-year sunset on this so that we can work on the T8R and the ITS and all the features and get some input from the TMP into this. That's my motion.
Okay, I don't have a second.
I still have my button on.
Yep, Councilmember Hornish.
One thing I just want to confirm, one question before I have a few more points. The HCM plus includes the median left turn, right turn lanes, but just not the ITS. Was there other improvements that we would like to include as we go through the permanent adoption of whatever we adopt as the interim tonight, besides the ITS, Steve?
Flashing yellows.
Flashing yellows. Length of turn pockets.
Flashing yellows, okay.
Length of turn pockets. Those are, I think those are included with the level of service intersections.
With the median, okay.
But they're not included in the V over C, which could cause the failure to happen there too soon.
But we can add that as we go through the process. Okay, that, those are just the factors I kind of wanted to better understand because, well, we all know it's the HCM plus, okay. I want to make the point that I, while I agree concurrency cannot be used to stop growth, concurrency can be used to manage growth, which is why it's called the Growth Management Act. About a year ago, I read a white paper from Perkins Coie, a very well-known, respected law firm in Seattle, and they talked about it, and it was pretty old even at that time, maybe 2007, 2008, trying to learn more about GMA, and they basically said, at some point, you cannot have all the goals of a GMA and have them all continue. You can't take care of the environment and grow. You can't grow if you don't have the infrastructure, and if you can't afford the infrastructure, you can't grow. So, these things are all kind of coming with us, we have to come to grips with right now. The, and I'm sorry, backing up, the one thing that Councilmember Valderrama quoted, it's like, yeah, under the GMA, you have options. If you can't pay for it, then you change the land use or you decrease your LOS, but that doesn't mean you have to allow the growth. You have to manage it. Back to my first point about it, the management of growth. Going back to the Perkins Coie, I like the concept, I think it was Councilmember Ritchie talking about, and Stewart, this is a balancing act. You can't choke it, you can't choke the growth, but you can't just allow it ad infinitum either. So, it has to be managed, which comes back to what the GMA says to do. The one thing we have to, I think, in my mind anyhow, we haven't taken, we have to take into account what's been done in the past, which was not really managing the growth in some mamish. So, I don't think we want to just shy away from coming to grips and coming to face with what's been done in the past, but we don't want to make it so painful for everybody right now either. But we don't want to just give up the farm to allow continued unfettered growth either. The one concept of the partnershiping with the developers, I totally agree with that. However, what I heard, what I didn't hear in that concept was taking into account the citizens' concerns and the citizens' level of service and the citizens' quality of life. That has to be balanced in there too. It has to be a partnership, but it'd be between the city, the developers, and the citizens. So, we got to take all that into account. So, with that in mind, I'd like to make a motion that we adopt, actually, I'm going to try to see if we can't get out of here tonight. I will make a motion that we adopt a 1.1 with a 30% segment individual, which would be a 1.4, as Victor had just proposed, and exclude the East Lakes Mamish Parkway from the V over C concurrency methodology.
I second that.
Could you repeat that for me?
Adopt a 1.1. Go ahead.
And a 30, yeah, a 1.1 and a 30% segment overage, which would be a 1.4 max for a segment. And just to make it clear, and exempt the East Lakes Mamish Parkway from the V over C methodology.
Okay, it's been moved and seconded. Do you want to speak to your motion or you feel like you did?
Mayor?
I think I did.
Hang on.
Can Tom confirm he's amenable to the ITS addition?
Tom?
Yes.
Yes, is that, can we get an "and" flashing yellow or no? We can do that by amendment otherwise. Tom?
I'm, shoot, yes, I'm definitely amenable to that.
Okay, so, yes, ITS, flashing yellow, adopt a 1.1, 30%, 1.4 segment, exclude East Lakes Mamish Parkway. It's been moved and seconded.
Wait, I have a question on it. So, when you say ITS and yellows, does that mean developing the T8R table or what does...
I don't know what the T8R table is.
Well, that's what they were saying, all these "ands" were in effect creating a new T8R.
Well, let's not call it that. Let's just say the "ands."
What are the "ands"? All the "ands," the right turn lanes, the flashing yellows, and that, is that what...
We already have the right turn lanes, the median, well, is the third thing that's in the HCM plus, Steve? There's 3 things, right?
There was a left turn lane as well.
Left, median, and right.
Yeah, left turn, median, and right turn. Those are already in the HCM plus capacities that's in the table that we have already. All we would be adding is an ITS and a flashing yellow.
Yeah, I'm good.
And Mayor, just one clarifying point for you, Tom, but I want to be clear that the motion is a 1.1 with a 30 basis point kicker, not 30%, right? So, that the cap is 1.4, because 30% would actually take you above 1.4.
Be 1.41, yeah. I did the quick math of what .3 is over 1.1, it came out of 30%, but you're, on the math, you're right. This is making it 1.1 for a corridor and 1.4 for a segment. How's that?
Easier. Okay, did you want to speak to your motion or you feel like you're good?
No, I think I have spoken.
Okay. Councilmember Stewart?
Yeah, so, can you guys review how the corridor, the weighted corridor number is calculated? So, the 1.4 segment would probably give us the room we need on a segment level, but all the segments could be passing, but I think the corridor might still fail, and so, that doesn't make sense to me. So, could you review that math with us for a moment?
Sure, and we see that actually, if you look at Sahali Way, and you can see that instance particularly, even in Scenario 2, and you can see that Sahali Way is failing because it has a 1.12 in the "and," but all of the segments, as you see below, the VCs are all below the 1.38.
Right.
So, that's kind of the reason, is that the segments have a higher allowance, but the corridor as a whole has a lower allowance, and that's how, in some cases, a quarter can fail, but its individual segments are passing.
So, that, and then the next question would be, I feel uncomfortable voting on this until we understand the impact of the flashing yellow and ITS. So, it seems premature to vote on this when we don't know how those additions to the capacity calculations would affect anything.
Agree.
And I can give some insight. We were talking about it before the meeting. Typical assumed capacity bump for ITS is about 5% for a corridor. I don't know the flashing yellow arrow, so that is one we'll have to come back with, but that gives you a general sense.
And would that apply to Sahali? Would ITS be, would we get that 5% bump on Sahali?
If ITS is assumed to be funded in your six-year TIP, then that would be a very fair addition.
It's going in. It's going in.
Okay. So, what would that look like if we had a 5%? So, that we would just add 5% to the corridor? We'd add 5% to each segment, correct, where ITS was applicable?
Correct.
So, but we still don't then understand how that would affect the corridor on that? I mean, it's a pretty complex calculation there, right?
It's a volume weighted average. So, the capacity of the corridor is a volume weighted average of the capacities, which those would all be increased by 5% if we're just doing ITS. And then the volumes, of course, are not increasing.
Right.
So, the volume weighted average of that overall percentage would go down.
Right, I'm good with math, but I can't do that on the fly. So, I guess, given that we want to affect the model, I don't know if council is amenable to, let's let those numbers run and see what that looks like before we take a vote on it, to be informed.
Mayor?
Yes.
I probably could get this on the screen. Might take me a minute or 3, but just rerunning the numbers by changing the corridors, leaving the corridor 1.1 and then changing the segments to an allowable V over C of 1.4. On the table, you have the Sahali Way 228 North Corridor, which is just in between 8 and 9. That failure of the corridor does not change. It still fails the "and" at 1.18. This quick math does have a 5% capacity addition for ITS, not for, nothing extra for flashing yellow. So, again, at 1.1, the failure here is 1.18. We're down to measuring hundreds here on something that's pretty high scale, but that's where it's at. That, and... That, and exclusive of East Lake Spanish Parkway, preliminarily running those numbers, there are no other failures currently for any segment or corridor except for that Sahali Way one in the AM.
But that's still, okay, so it still means though that there's no room for any additional growth because we still have a failure.
Without adding that to your six-year funded list or put, however you want to tell it.
Which it has been for quite some time.
Funding up until this year.
Right. So I would, I would like to propose an amendment that we make Sahali, based on Victor's recommendation, a 1.3. And we make Dothee Hill, I think should be, let me see, hold on, 1.1.
I'm sorry, what is Dothee Hill?
So Sahali at 1.3 and Dothee Hill at 1.25, and then all else could be 1.1.
Second.
Okay, it's been moved and seconded. Sorry, I'm trying to move my crutches. Do you want to speak to your amendment or you're good?
I think, I think I'm good. I think that if we see the numbers run, I'd be willing to adjust that down. But until we, I mean, we're, again, we're doing a lot of math on the fly here and that makes me uncomfortable, so.
Mayor?
Councilmember Ross, oh, sorry, Cheryl, yes.
I'm sorry, Councilmember, you had Dothee at 1.13, Sahali at 1.5.
No, Sahali at 1.5. I have Sahali at 1.3, Dothee Hill at 1.25, and then keeping all the other ones at 1.1.
And do you have a different number for the segments?
It's the 25%.
Is it plus 25% for the others or for those? Okay.
Yep.
Okay, I don't have any more lights. So we're going to vote on the amendment, which is to make Sahali 1.3 and Dothee Hill 1.25. Pardon? Okay. All those in favor of the amendment, say aye.
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 Those opposed?
Nay.
Nay.
Okay, I'm not sure where we were on the nays.
I think it's 5 to 2. I think it's 5 to 2.
5 to 2, okay. The amendment fails. So we're back to the main motion, which is to adopt a 1.1, say 1.4 for the segment, exclude East Lake Spanish Parkway, and add in ITS and flashing yellows.
Move the vote.
All those, ladies, we're having a sidebar conversation here, so.
Mayor Moran, I think has an amendment.
Well, she doesn't have her light on, and I've got a light over here. Councilmember Ross? Okay. Did you want, are you making an amendment?
So what, yeah.
The motion is to adopt a 1.1 with a 1.4 allowance for segments, excluding East Lake Spanish Parkway, and adding in ITS and flashing yellows. Okay, so all those in favor, say aye. Aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Nay.
Okay, I think that was 4 to 3, so that passes.
In the concept, we'd have an ordinance drafted for next week, is that correct?
I think we may, do you need a motion to direct you to do so?
No, we'll bring you an ordinance. It will be for interim development regs on this. It'll be an emergency ordinance. If you choose to pass it that way, if you not choose to pass, if you only pass it with four votes, it would go into effect five days after that would be published. And then we'll send that back to the process to make that a permanent regulation if that's the direction that you stay on.
Okay, so then if adopted then in the following week, we could then further direct you to repeal the moratorium and bring an ordinance back to repeal that.
After you take that action, we'll bring you back an ordinance.
All right.
Moratorium.
Yee-haw.
Very good. Okay, we're not done yet, so don't pack up quite yet. So under council reports, I emailed the council about SCA. We have to adopt the legislative agenda tomorrow evening. Did anyone have any comments on that? We've kind of gone through this before.
Well, SCA, I --
Yeah, please.
So my question was, we had before asked them to go look at the ST3. Did they have a response?
They did, and ST3 has nothing to do with it, is what my --
But we're asking them to go back and see if they will then, as a legislative priority, go to the legislature to ask for relief.
No, they, that is not, it is not, your request specifically is not being incorporated into, so I did ask, cut and paste, ask.
All right, thank you.
So I need council's head nods that I may vote in favor of SCA's legislative agenda.
Nope.
Okay.
They don't put SC3, damn them.
Okay, Deputy Mayor Moran, did you have something?
Oh, I have the last one.
Okay. All right. I don't think we have anything else. Okay, Councilmember Stewart?
No, could we move next week's meeting to Monday, please? I move that we move next week's meeting to Monday.
Second.
Okay, it's been moved and seconded, discussion?
After you finish with this, we got.
I think we have a very important vote to take next week, and I let the city manager know that I could not be in attendance on Tuesday, so that's why I'm making the motion.
Okay, Councilmember Ross?
I can support that.
My only thought is that, are you, do you not have the ability to call in for this? Changing meeting dates is sometimes challenging for both council and the public.
Well, I know, and I apologize because I tried to move this several weeks ago. I can call in for a time, but I don't know how that time will correspond with the agenda, so I just, I have a, I have a conflict that I have no control over.
I need to look at a calendar.
It's been moved and seconded.
Give them people a look at the calendars for a sec to make sure.
My only issue is that I may not be able to get a, I have a standing babysitter on Tuesdays, but I don't know that I'm going to be able to do that. Oh, and we have the Boy Scouts coming. They're slated to come at 6:00 PM as well.
Okay, so we vote.
Yep. Okay, all those in favor of moving the meeting to Monday, the 19th from the 20th, say aye.
Aye.
I can't see, I need some hands because I can't see down at the end of the dais.
Chris?
Okay.
I thought you said aye.
Opposed?
Chris?
Nay.
Nay.
I'm trying to get seven together. So I'm nay.
I need, okay.
Only because of the Boy Scouts, but can we switch the Boy Scouts?
I don't know at this juncture, right now, without contacting them through Melanie, I don't know.
It's his senior sports awards banquet. So can we try to switch the Boy Scouts?
Karen, I have no idea. They reached out to Melanie Anderson and Melanie reached out to me. I'm slated to meet them at 6:00 PM and they're supposed to do the, so. We have, it's, okay.
I won't be here, I'm not missing this.
I don't blame you at all. Okay, so I need a motion to adjourn.
Wait, but.
Oh, do you have a report? Sorry.
First of all, I think we got one other issue here that we.
Well, just a couple of quick follow-ups to 1.1 and 1.4. So I'm a little confused because it shows a failure. So I don't know if we're going to work with the attorney's office or are we redoing the tip fairly soon, too? Or are you expecting that to be in conjunction? Because it said, the project is listed on the six-year tip, but it shows it funded in the outer years. So I could, we just want some clarification on what that means to us and you together.
Understood. I think they're asking Mr. City Manager, because Sahali shows a failure, there's no funding attached to Sahali anymore. It was removed this year, so there's $0 in the first six years, so it needs to show funding.
We'll work on that. Boom, 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 boom.
Okay.
We'll work on that piece, put that together, yep. The other thing under the manager's board I needed to mention to you, but I will save that until another meeting since we're pushing 11 o'clock, is dealing with whether you wanted to have a retreat. However, if your council meetings, as we go through time, run as smoothly as this one, we probably don't need to do that. But we'll talk about that at another meeting and look at a date that you might want to get together and talk about a few things.
Okay, I have a whole bunch of lights on. Councilmember Ross?
Good job.
Councilmember Ritchie?
Yeah, I'd like to make a motion, well, before I make the motion, Councilmember Stewart, family first, obviously, can you tell me what time you could, just in terms of balance here?
I honestly don't know because I do not emcee the senior sports awards banquet. It starts at 6:30. It generally runs for several hours, and so I don't know at what time my son will be honored during that.
I appreciate that.
So I have no control over that.
Would it be possible, would you be able to make a 5:30 start? I think it's critical that you're there. I realize your family's first. I'd be amenable to start in the, I don't get out until 5:30 anyway and traffic's going to be horrible.
But this is not new business, so it tends to come at the end of the agenda.
I appreciate that, but I think that we've kind of dealt with what we need to deal with. I'm saying I would be amenable, you're a member of the council, I would like you to be here if at all possible, and I would be amenable to moving the agenda item up to the front so that you can be here, go be with your family, take care of family business, but participate as much as possible. I'd be amenable to that. So my motion is, if you could be here at, say, 5:30 for a 5:30 start.
I have to leave by 6:15. Can we do it in 45 minutes? 6:15.
Okay, we could even have dinner here. Wouldn't that be nice? Have all 707 dinner right there?
I don't need food, I just.
I know, I appreciate that. If we got here early and then we could have, we could take care of our business and then our urgent business that we just took care of now, it's a matter of voting on a motion, I think we know how it's going to go, and then she can leave at 6:15 or whatever it is, and we can have dinner for, you know, 15 minutes, 20 minutes in the back, something like that. That's all I'm proposing. Is there, head nods? I won't do it if there's no motion, if there's no.
That's your motion?
My motion is we start the meeting at 5:30 and then, you know, next week's meeting.
We have a motion and it's been seconded.
Can solve this in 45 minutes, though?
No.
No, I don't, I don't think we can.
Since I was on the opposite end of that vote, I was wondering if I couldn't bring up the idea for, of.
Your mic's not on.
Yes, your mic is not. We already have a motion, though, and it's been seconded.
I'll withdraw my motion in respect to Councilmember Moran.
I'd like to make the motion that we talk to Melanie into rescheduling the Boy Scouts and then we can have the meeting on Monday.
Second.
I still don't know if I can be at the meeting on Monday. So I'm serious, I don't have.
You really don't think we can all find you a babysitter?
I don't, Pam, you know, I like to know the babysitters that I have. I have a standing babysitter, she's a Skyline cheerleader, she have Tuesday, so.
All right, okay, that's fair. All right, so, yes, could you make an amendment to my motion, please?
I would like to amend your motion that we try to find a different date for the Cub Scouts, or the Boy Scouts, in respect to the mayor, to try to find a sitter. If we can get those two in place, the amendment would be, if not those two things, then my plan, let's move the meeting up to 5:30. One or the other, but yours first, okay? And if we can move it up to 5:30 on Tuesday, that's Plan B. Plan A is 6:30 on Monday, yeah, 6:30 on Tuesday. Wait, what did I say, 6:30 on Monday? It's late, my brain's fried. 6:30 on Monday.
Yes, or 5:30.
Or 5:30 on Tuesday.
The thing we can do with V over C.
Right?
No, you're not going to get it done in 45 minutes.
We're not going to get it done in 45 minutes.
Well, if we don't, we don't. I'm just, you know.
We can try.
That's the motion.
I'm not sure what your motion is exactly. It's a one or the other scenario or?
That's exactly what it is.
Yellow light.
That's, I'm trying to find a way to get Councilmember Moran, or Councilmember Stewart here and you here and to see if we can defray the Boy Scouts. And I know there's no good scenarios here, but I mean, I think it's really important that we put family issues first.
I would agree.
Yours, too. And I want to make sure we're, you know, we've all got family pressures and I get it. So I'm trying to find a way to balance this out. That's all.
I would agree.
So yes, the motion is that we schedule the meeting for Tuesday at.
No, Monday.
Monday.
At 6:30.
At 6:30 if we can move the Boy Scouts and if the mayor, Mauchow can find childcare arrangements,